Good evening. Welcome to the August 5th, 2021, meeting of the Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals. For many of you, this is your first time back, well, actually, this is your first time back to a live meeting at Town Hall. We've been having a few meetings live since we didn't stop doing the Zoom meetings. As you may have seen on the signs when you walked into Town Hall, those fully vaccinated, at least 14 days from their last shot, are no longer required to wear a face covering at Town Hall, though as you can see, some of our board members and staff, including myself, will be keeping their masks on. With that, I would ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
We will be starting this meeting with the public hearings. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the Board. Members of the public are typically given a three-minute time limit on their testimony, so please keep that in mind. A few other things I just wanted to mention, well, actually, we'll do the minutes first. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
No.
Phil moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Um, want to mention a few other things before we get started. Uh, the first thing is if you are, uh, if you have your cell phones on you, if you can do us a favor and silence never turn them off, because they interfere with our recording equipment, and we're doing it as well. Uh, secondly, if you're inclined to speak to one another while you're sitting in the audience waiting to be heard, if you can do us a favor and go out in the hallway to speak rather than speaking in the auditorium, we would greatly appreciate that, because that also interferes with our recording equipment. Um, and lastly, um, we want to just read the, uh, instructions on the emergency exit instructions, uh, for, uh, for, for our meetings. In case of emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall, and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Please do not attempt to use the elevators during, during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall. And with that, we will, uh, get started with adjournments.
Okay, there are some adjournments, and changes to the agenda. Item five, Town of Southampton Housing Authority, 86 Vale Avenue in Riverside, and it's going to be re-advertized for 819. Item six on the agenda, Town of Southampton Housing Authority, 116 Vale Avenue, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-139-2-44 Riverside, that's going to be adjourned to our, um, re-advertized for our 819 meeting. And Town of Southampton Housing Authority, 69 Old Quorg Road in Riverside, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-139-2-31.4, that's going to be re-advertized for 819. Number eight on the agenda, which is 94 Doon Road Holdings Corp., 94 Doon Road in East Quorg, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-385-1-37.3, I move to adjourn that to our November 4th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item nine on the agenda, which is East Quorg, 535 Realty Inc., 535 Montor Highway in East Quorg, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-341-1-52, I'll move to adjourn that to our September 2nd meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
On the decision calendar, the Town of Southampton has been withdrawn, and then the following decisions will be, uh, held over to our August 19th meeting. Matthew Christopherson, Michael and Amy O'Brien, Kim Lee McCready, Nicelex Real Estate Holdings Development Corp., Scott Schlachter, Karen and Brian Coyle, Edward Burke Jr. and Patricia Burke, um, Robert Posma and Janet Whalen, Richard Stott, 85 Eastway LLC, and Barbara Swizlowski. Yeah, I got it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, Laura Mazarian, I would like to make a motion to reopen that.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Um, Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Okay, and we'll accept the written submissions, and then, um, I'll move, uh, to close it now for a determination later tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Okay, back to the beginning of the agenda. Item one on the agenda is Alan Klein and Nita Kalish Klein, 29 Clay Pit Road in Remsenberg, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-368-1-16.2. Applicant request for relief from Town Code 330-11, Residential District Stable Dimensional Regulations, for a principal minimum side yard setback of 13 feet plus or minus where 20 feet is required. Two, a principal total side yard setback of 33.5 feet where 45 feet is required plus or minus. Three, um, a principal rear yard setback of 42 feet where 60 feet is required, all to allow part of the existing detached garage to be attached to the existing two-story dwelling by way of a proposed one-story connector on a non-conforming lot. And two, 330-76A, to allow the main portion of the garage to be located zero feet from the main dwelling where a minimum of five feet is required. In addition to clarify the records, a principal rear yard setback of 53.3 feet is existing where a rear yard setback of 60 feet is required for roof over porch attached to northwest side of dwelling, and any other relief necessary.
Is someone here for this application? I need an affidavit of posting. Come on up. So I'll just take your affidavits. Thank you. Perfect. The Board has jurisdiction.
Okay, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing okay. Just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I'm an architect.
You're an architect, okay. So if you can state your name and address, please.
My name is Randolph Croxton.
Okay.
Uh, my name is Randolph Croxton. I live at, uh, 115 Madison Street in Sag Harbor.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I swear to, to do so.
Thank you. Can you tell us about the application?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, I think an useful additional document is the view from the street.
Okay.
And so I... I'll take them off. I'll take them off.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And just to introduce the, the client, the owners of this home and their circumstances. Uh, the, uh, the architect of the original home, uh, and he designed it, and it was constructed over 20 years ago, um, has failing health, and he and his wife and his family are very much attached to this house. It's a small house, it only has two bedrooms. Uh, it's also located at a high hill off of the street, uh, and having, our firm has done a lot of work in historic preservation, so one of the things that we did was to, uh, to make a connector. They wanted to make it so that, uh, the, Mr. Klein has fallen a couple of times down the steps, both of the bedrooms are on the upper level, uh, and so the desire here is to allow the direct access to a small bedroom that occupies half of the existing garage. So the, that's the purpose of this, uh, proposal, and although the, I was astounded to listen to all of the changes, the, the lot is not non-conforming to begin with. So there are a lot of, uh, variations from what that theoretical non-conform, uh, conforming lot would be, uh, but the, I think to, just to get to the essence, the new bearing-on grade that is proposed is 81 square feet of the connector to the existing garage. The total additional habitable area, which is just the area of the bedroom and storage and a small bathroom, is 520 square feet. The, uh, it's in an R40, the maximum gross square footage is 15,000 square feet on a conforming lot of 40,000 square feet. Actual, all-in, after this, we will have a residence of 2,837 square feet, uh, on a lot of 20,283 square feet. Existing is two bedrooms, after this, there will be three bedrooms. Uh, and the, uh, the key, one of the keys here is that... By taking the existing house here...
Could you stand behind it so...
I'm sorry?
Could you stand in such a way so everybody could see it?
Yeah. This better?
Yeah.
Okay. The existing house, which is shown here in elevation, and the existing garage, uh, will have absolutely no changes made to them at all in terms of the elevation. The connector is located just here, and this is the small ground-level, uh, bedroom that would be directly accessible. Uh, the garage stays the same, the facade of the garage stays the same, and as you saw in the, uh, photographs from the street, uh, with 120-degree cone of vision, a driver moving either direction on the street does not see this condition. However, if you were to stop in front of the house, and that's the middle picture, and look straight up, you would see the existing fence, and above it, beyond, you would see the connector, in completely matching windows and completely matching detailing. So literally, this is the new, uh, portion, and that's the objective, and that's what my client came to me, uh, with as a request.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No.
Okay. Um, so, I understand that a lot of the relief is being created by the fact that you are connecting the, the garage and the residence. I understand as well that they are, you know, where they are already located.
Yes.
So obviously, moving, uh, you know, existing structures would be prohibitively expensive.
Can you try to stay at the microphone for me?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So, so I mean, I think that's, that is driving a lot of the relief that's being requested, um, the fact that the structures are where they are, and when you connect them, all of a sudden you have all these non-conformities.
I had a question for Katie before. Um, Katie, one of the things they were saying is that the garage is going to be zero feet from the main dwelling when five is required? I didn't understand that, because they're connecting it to the building, so it becomes part of the main structure.
Yeah, I'm just looking at that right now.
It didn't make sense, it shouldn't be in there.
I think they're talking about the remaining part that's not converted to habitable.
She's the one remaining portion of the garage, because...
It was the same building connected.
Right, but they're, they're considering even though the garage itself is one, well, the current garage is one structure, that habitable part is, is considered habitable, the garage portion, my understanding, is still considered accessory, so that's why they put that section in the code.
In the same building?
Yes. And it may have to do with more than, more than just that probably with the construction part of it, I guess there has to be certain access and things of that nature, which is not my purview, but...
Fire, fire...
Fire separations, things like that. So the, because garage portion is considered accessory, the habitable portion is considered part of the principal.
We've always considered him as one building, that's why I'm asking, because it's usually about like...
That was the explanation of that.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I tend, tend to think of it in the same way that Brian does, but we don't want the, you know, the applicant to have a problem after, because, you know, we, you know, relief is not granted that someone in the building department thinks is necessary, so...
I just think it would set a bad precedent, because usually we deal with buildings and fires going through the middle, and now we're, if we went forward with that, it's going to give zero fee.
Well, and when we have, we put the condition from the Fire Marshal's Office that it has to be made of a certain kind of combust, you know, non-comflammable, non-combustible. We've added that condition for the few applications where we have granted.
Yeah, but I can't remember a circumstance where we considered part of a structure, part of a primary, and part of it being accessory.
I just don't think it's a...
It's confused, and what are the, and then what are the setbacks?
Correct. Doesn't make for...
Well, the setbacks are the principal, right?
It's all part of the principal building.
I, I understand, but, but it still is muddying waters. Um, so I, I see your concern as well.
I'll find out.
Okay, all right. Um, so other than that, um, I didn't really have any other comments, other than that we got comments from building departments, um, which, I don't know whether you've had a chance to see them, but I'm going to read them.
Sure.
Into the record, okay. This is from Marjorie Riley, Building Inspector, and this is what she said. And it may be that some of these issues have already been addressed, I don't know. But anyway, number one, the survey shall be revised to indicate the portion of the garage that will be converted into habitable living space, and to indicate the principal side and rear yard setback to the closest point of the new habitable space. Two, it has been determined that the portion of the garage that is going to remain as garage is considered to be accessory to the main dwelling, since there is no access from the garage directly to, into the main dwelling. As such, relief from Town Code 330-76A is required, as stated in the advertisement. That was what, just what Brian and I and Katie were discussing. Three, the roof over porch on the northwest side of the dwelling was part of the Certificate of Compliance Number A0198789 issued on August 9th, 2000. However, variance relief was not requested at that time. And four, the ZBA shall confirm the single and separate status of the lot. Although the single and separate search dated June 24th, 2021, that was submitted with the application, states that the property has been in single and separate ownership and her predecessor's entitlements since prior to May 27th, 1976, it also says, except as follows, see attached chain of title, which I think is pretty typical language.
Yep, and I confirmed it. I confirmed it.
Okay. Okay. All right, so those are the comments we...
Yeah. Yes, my answer is that, that we are aware of all of these, and we have been in communication and have resolved them, to my knowledge, to the complete satisfaction of everyone. Uh, the key thing, I just handed out the requested survey, which shows the breaking of the structure into two parts, into the habitable portion and the remainder.
Okay.
Uh, and I just handed that in.
Okay, very good. And also, all, any setbacks, relief requests for setbacks that are, uh, included in the application need to be on the survey? I think there was one I had trouble finding, it might have been there anyway. This, this one was a little, a little hard to read.
Well, there, there are a couple pluses and minuses.
Yeah.
But now I am wondering, you know, like, for the, for the principal minimum side yard setback, are they using the 18.1, or are they using...
I'm just having a hard time to work...
The advertising...
Having one building as an accessory and as a principal, and it's the same building.
No, I understand that.
Just...
I understand that. Candace, do you know?
Yeah, we, we didn't come up with that idea, we were instructed...
I understand, it's the first we've ever heard of it, so...
It was a discussion between multiple, multiple other building inspectors down there, and that's what the outcome was, and I believe it has to do with the fact that you can't access the main house from the garage. That was the last line that I heard, but it was multiple inspectors who got together to discuss that, because they had the same questions and concerns.
Yeah, that was the exact, that's exactly, uh, actually, our application and appearance was delayed, uh, because of this discussion between the two building inspectors about the issue that is being brought forward. And, uh, it came down to the interpretation related to that specific issue, which is that the access is not from the garage into the house, into the residence, it's purely as a, uh, a bedroom for use and...
Yeah. I, I understand, and, and I don't want the applicant to be caught in the middle between, you know, our, our Board and, and the building department, but, you know, we do, we, we just, Brian's raising concerns as to what this would mean in terms of other applications down the road, and that's something that we, you know, think about that maybe the building inspectors aren't thinking about.
Well, whatever it is, the, the numbers are on the survey, so, you know, I'll encourage, you know, either Marge or Dennis to put something in writing for us, so that this Board doesn't have to make that leak.
Yeah.
It'll be from the building department.
Yeah. I have a question. Your requested relief is 13 feet, and I can't find that on the survey, but I can find 18.1. Is, was the 13 a typo, and it's supposed to be 18.1, or are you looking for 13?
That may very well be.
Well, that's, that's what I was saying, Cornelius, because I, I think they, they probably didn't have it on there before, and now, what we need, what I need to find out from the building department is if they're using that 18.1 setback to the proposed living space, or the eight to the corner of the framed garage. Both of those numbers are...
I think in the comments, there were, there'd be 18.1, so I think he's asking for less.
Yeah, it was very confusing on the survey, to be honest, but, you know...
Well, because they, they've broken up the garage.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
And the remaining portion of the garage is just going to be a single car on the finished base?
Yes, yes, exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any other questions, members of the Board?
I have one about the roof over the porch, that's also being requested with variance.
Yep.
Sure.
So the setback is 60, and it's a 53.3.
Yes.
That's what it says, yeah. So, okay, so that's something else we have to consider.
Yes.
Okay.
It would, it seems from the record that that was a mistake, because there's a C of O for the house that's there.
I know, but they say in here that they, you know, to clarify it.
Correct.
That's right.
That we should, right.
Yeah.
Yes, so we need to feel that.
And that would be pulled forward with this approval.
Okay.
Right.
And, and that, that goes back 20 years.
I get that, but I'm just saying, you know, in terms of our job, what we have to do.
Oh, yeah, no, sometimes things get missed, and all of a sudden, someone requests, uh, asks for a variance, and it's discovered along the way that a structure or something on the property has, uh, doesn't have all the approvals it's supposed to, even if it has a C of, or Certificate of Compliance, so, anyway. Um, okay, any other questions, members of the Board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Klein? This is her property located at 29 Clay Pit Road in Remsenberg. If, if you want to speak, this would be the time to let us know. And does not appear to be any takers, so, uh, with that, Cornelius, it is yours.
We'll close the public hearing, leaving open for written submissions only until August 20th, with a written decision on September 2nd.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you for, for being here this evening.
Thank you very much.
Do you want this?
Nope.
No? Okay.
I still can't get over the two buildings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's very confusing.
Because the, the intent is for fire people to access between, so if we're not being between, it's the same building.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I understand.
Okay, item two on the agenda is Hazy Wolf LLC, 1341 Flying Point Road in Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-179-1-33. Excuse me. Applicant request for relief from the following provisions of the Town Code, to allow an existing home with deck and hot tub to be raised in order to comply with FEMA regulations, to enclose an existing roof porch, and to construct a second-story deck. One, 330-46.2B2 adjacent areas, a principal setback of 33.9 feet from the crest of the dune to the dwelling where 125 feet is required. Two, a principal setback of 27 feet from the crest of the dune to the existing deck where 125 feet is required. A setback of 30 feet from the crest of the dune where 125 feet is required for a proposed stairway to an existing second-floor deck that will be expanded. Four, a setback of 49 feet from the crest of the dune where 125 feet is required for a proposed deck extension of an existing deck. Five, a setback of 57 feet from the crest of the dune where 125 feet is required to allow the conversion of an existing outdoor shower, set of stairs, and a deck housing mechanical utilities to a deck with stairs over to access an existing roof deck and abandon an existing slate patio and stairs. Two, 330-46.2B2B4A and 4B adjacent areas, for a minimum side yard setback of 3.7 feet where 14 feet is required, and total side yard setback of 19.9 feet where 25 feet is required to construct a utility room to accommodate existing utilities. Three, 330-46.2B3 adjacent areas, to replace an existing outdoor shower, utility platform, deck, and stairs with a new deck and stairs. Four, 330-84D Pyramidite for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 480 cubic feet for a proposed utility room on the northwest corner of the dwelling. And five, 330-11Note6 Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations, to allow the proposed height of the dwelling to be 42 point, uh, 42 feet 6 inches, where a maximum of 42 feet is permitted, and any other relief necessary.
The Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening.
Good evening. Anthony Pasca, as Exceptor Angel Italian Pasca, I'm the attorney for Hazy Wolf LLC. Uh, I'm here with Joseph Pejek, he's the architect, and Aram Turcunian. I'm going to suggest you swear in, Aram, because the chances of him not being able to keep his mouth shut are not high, so...
Okay, Aram, if you can just go over to where we can hear, get you on the recording. Uh, if you can state your name and address, please.
Aram Turcunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are 1341 Flying Point Road, we put up the survey and a couple of the, the key drawings that'll help go over some of these things. There's, um, four main parts to this, this project that we're doing, and as you can see, it's a, it's a pre-existing house on a constrained parcel, this is at the far end of Flying Point Road, right down by the cut. It's literally the last house on the, on Flying Point before you hit the cut. Um, and it, it, the house is where it is as a result of some older variances that were issued, so that is the pre-existing footprint of the house. Um, part one is lifting the house to get it out of the FEMA floodplain. It needs about three feet of elevation to meet the current FEMA standards, so that's one part of it. Part two is getting, uh, a space, which is right here, for the mechanicals to get out of the FEMA, uh, or above the FEMA floodplain. Uh, right now, they're below, and we need a place for them, so that's the part of it. And as far as the practical part of the occupants, we're really focused on the rear of the house, we're asking for an enclosure of a porch to get about 515 square feet of habitable additional floor area, it's a 20-something percent increase over what's there. And on top of that, um, we're asking for a deck extension, we're losing the first floor deck, so they're asking for a deck extension on the existing second-floor deck. Um, and then, what's that really visible on...
Anthony, if you would stay close to the microphone.
Sorry.
Sorry, it just...
Yeah, no, no, that's okay. What's not really visible on the, from the, that bird's eye view of the survey, but it's a little more visible, uh, up here, is, is an existing roof deck that is on the north side of the roof ridge, here, and what we're asking for is lifting it by about a foot to get over the roof ridge and adding a small extension on the back, and that's to make that a little more practical use, because right now, it's a, it's a very hard to access, and so there are, you know, there's a sort of new design to get stairs up there so that it can be accessible. So those are the, the main purposes of this project, and what it results in are a series of, even though it's within the, essentially, the existing footprint... footprint and space, it results in four kinds of variances. One is the height and pyramid relief for that roof deck that I just told you about. My understanding is that when you lift a house to comply with FEMA, the existing structure's not subject to the pyramid or the height limits, but any additions are. So, what's in pink here on the shading is the whole part that transects the pyramid. But really, what's at stake in the variance is this portion here and about a foot on this side of the roof deck. So, that, even though it was advertised for 1,600 and something cubic feet, the actual new volume that's not included within the existing space is 480, I believe. Nope, 403 cubic feet. So, that's one set of variances. The other part of the pyramid is this bit that shaded in in pink over here, and that's for the portion of the mechanical room that is still within the pyramid because it's close to the side yard. It was originally advertised at 480, and we sharpened our pencil after, I'll explain that, but we got it down to 103 cubic feet. It still transects the pyramid. We're asking for side yard relief from the adjacent area side yard requirements for that mechanical room because it's, even though it's being located above some existing footprint space, outdoor footprint space, it still creates a side yard relief. And we are asking for the dune crest setback relief for, like, the new space that's being added in the back, basically, the enclosed porch space that's becoming habitable, and the new deck space that all is, even though it's within the existing footprint of the structure, it's new space, so it requires dune crest setback relief. So, that's the application. What it, it's really being driven by is the need to comply with FEMA, which then triggers a whole bunch of other things, including the mechanical space and the pyramid and height relief for the new deck space that's being added to it. We're looking for, we're essentially trying to accomplish personal goals and regulatory goals. So, the FEMA compliance for both the lifting of the house and the mechanical space, that's the regulatory goal that we're trying to achieve. The personal goal that we're trying to achieve with it is the additional habitable space in the back and the utility of the decks, the second floor deck and the roof deck, being able to make that more accessible. When we presented this application at first, the building inspector, right before advertisement, gave us a turn down letter that flagged, their main concern was to look at the mechanical room. Because at the time, it was, it was up here a little bit, a little closer to the side yard, and a little bit bigger, and the pyramid relief was at about three times what we're asking for now. We looked at, was there any way to relocate this? This is a big part of the application, is to see if there's an alternative space for it. And the main thing is there's a, there's a design practicality of this that, you know, we went to the engineer, and it sort of created this cascade of problems by trying to take this and relocate it to the other side. Because all the utilities come in here, it's an old house, it doesn't have duct room, it doesn't, so it created this, what would be a simple raising and renovation of the house would become a, just almost a complete redo of this house. So, from a practical standpoint, we couldn't relocate it to this side. But there's another sort of corresponding legal problem, which is a little unique to this property. This dashed line here is the dune crest. And because it's the last property on Flying Point Road, you see the dune crest wraps around the east side of the house. So, flipping the mechanical room over to the east side of the house would have traded one adjacent area variance over here that we need for a new dune crest variance over here. I mean, I don't know what's, you know, in the grand scheme of things, what's more critical. But from, when you start weighing in the practical and the legal problems that that creates, there's just no real way for us to relocate it. But we did really ask the architect and engineer to sit down and sharpen that pencil as much as possible. And so, they were able to come up with a kind of a redesign for the mechanical so that it, can't really draw it in here, but it carves into the house a little bit. So, they took some of the space out of the house and were able to shrink down the mechanical room and really just get it down to the minimum size necessary. There's a plan over here where you can kind of see the carve out goes in, and they were able to compact all the mechanicals down into that space. That's the application, I mean, briefly. The, we've sort of gone through the, in our written materials, the factors, we character the community, this is an existing house, an existing footprint. It's a modest addition that we're seeking to get out of the expense of making it FEMA compliant. It's hard to justify this project without, you know, some practical improvements to the house that's there. We have no alternatives that are feasible. The footprint is what it is. There's no way to shift it over closer to the dune. There's no way to shift it that way. It's a high-shaped property, and we are at the...
No, it's impossible.
This is it.
This is possible.
This is it.
You can't, you can't...
No, no.
And the dune... Very few options in terms of other than requesting...
There's a metal bulkhead here, too, which is kind of a unique thing now, these days, which was originally done in the 80s. And we, representing some other, the prior owners and all nine other owners that way, were able to work out a, kind of a reconstruction of that bulkhead. So, it's a new bulkhead. Most of it's new. It was repaired and re-engineered. And it ain't going anywhere. That thing was engineered to withstand anything at this point. So, we got a very well-protected upland, but it's super constrained at this point in terms of alternatives. Substantiality, I mean, the numbers, when you compare them to the abstract, they sound high. But when you compare them to what's there, it's what's there. I mean, these setbacks are essentially what all the setbacks are. There are some increases in terms of the deck space and the living space that we talked about. So, those are getting closer to the dune crest, but not any closer than the pre-existing structure is.
So, the ones that are like 33.9, 27, 30, those are all existing, they're just now going to be enclosed as part of the house? And same for the deck?
This, yeah. Nothing, this is the existing footprint, right? Nothing's getting closer down here to the house. But because of the additions, so you're getting here, it triggers a new calculation. So, that's what the building department flags, is anytime there's a new portion of a deck, a new portion of anything, stairs, decks, whatever, it's going to trigger a new setback variance that's required for that. So...
Yeah.
That's the application.
Yeah. So, if, for example, you know, the applicant wanted to try to comply with the crest of dune setback, there could be no house on this, no structure on the property at all.
Not at all. And you can see, this is the coastal erosion line here, too.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, this, we don't need a coastal erosion variance because of, we're not increasing the footprint by more than like, the building department asked us to look at it and put the, a table on the survey, but they were satisfied that we're not coming close to the 25%.
Yeah.
But, you see, there's no, there's just no place to put this.
There's no place to put it. And so, I mean, you know, normally, you know, part of the application in, you know, with crest of dune is, you know, I'd be asking, well, you know, can you retreat, you know, or retreat further? There's nowhere to retreat to on this one.
No.
There just, there just isn't.
30 feet from the, from the street.
Yeah. And the benefit is, I mean, we'll see if any of the neighbors are here, but the benefit, from my perspective, is FEMA compliance, very important to the town. You know, having, you know, updated septic and just improving, improving the house, you know, a benefit overall. And...
Yeah, no.
You know, so, I mean, there are all those things that are, you know, beneficial to the applicant, but beneficial to the community as a whole.
Yeah. Now, we didn't, I just want to say, we didn't hear from any neighbors, but I know Mrs. Kirkbright's here, and she's, she's the next door neighbor over. I know her, and, and my clients, you know, they're very fond of her. So, they want to hear whatever she has to say, and, you know, if there's anything we can do, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay. Okay. I appreciate that.
What is the last revised survey that you have up there?
So, the last revised survey is dated the 29th. Mr. Data.
It's highlighted, right? It's July?
Yeah, it's July 29, 2021. It was submitted on July 30.
It was?
Yeah. Yeah, that has the revised, Kay has the revised dimensions for the mechanical room, which was sort of the...
Yeah, we don't have that in our correspondence, so that's why I was asking.
Okay. And we did have some comments from the building department. Maybe they were already addressed.
Oh, you just gave just?
But, anyway, I just want to read them into the record, actually, from both Marjorie Riley and Dennis O'Rourke. So, from Marjorie, Marjorie Riley, applicant shall submit an original revised survey, which maybe you just did, I don't know, indicating the following. One, show distance of crest of dune to first story decks, first story deck. Two, show distance of crest of dune to second story deck. Three, setbacks for all structures. Two, plan shall be revised to show changes. Then, from Dennis O'Rourke, a height relief is required due to the proposed expansion of the existing dwelling. Two, it would be preferred that the utility platform be attached to the principal building rather than detached. And three, I would suggest, if possible, that the utility platform be placed on the east side of the dwelling.
Yeah. And that was what we did in response. Dennis had thought this was detached. It really wasn't, but what, he forced us to look at it as carefully as we could, which resulted in us, you know, being able to use some of the interior space of the house to push the mechanical room in.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So, you know, I know there's a, there's a lot of relief here, you know, including a small amount of pyramid relief and height relief. You know, I just want to mention about the height relief. The height relief is really being created because you're trying to have FEMA compliance. So, and it's not a huge amount of it, it's six inches of height relief, it appears.
Mm-hmm.
And it's only for the new...
It's only for the new portion, right?
Yes.
Just, again, it's just this little bit plus a foot that's on the north side of the ridge.
Yeah. Yeah. But, I mean, we don't grant height relief very often, but when we do, it's usually because of people trying to, trying to comply with FEMA, I would say.
It's always, I meant, it's always in the FEMA areas.
Yeah. 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 So, okay. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Hazy Wolf LLC? Come on up for 1341 Flying Point Road and Watermill. And you can have a seat or go to the podium, whatever you'd prefer.
I'm obviously a Rick. I'm not, you know, this isn't something I do.
Yep. And I do have to swear you in, so whenever you're settled, I can do that.
Okay. I want to put this up. And I want to put this up. And I want to put this up. Okay. I am obviously...
No, you're doing the time.
Fine, take your time.
And I want to put this up.
Thank you, Aram.
Okay. Oh, wait. I'm just moving because I can't see.
Okay. Okay, sure.
Oh, yeah. And I'm short. I stand for smack in front of you.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I just have to swear you in, so whenever you're ready, we'll start with that.
Oh, dear. How do I do with it? Here we go. Okay.
Okay, if you can state your name and address, please.
My name is Marilyn Kirkbright. I live at 1335 Flying Point Road Watermill.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you can tell us what your thoughts are on the application, and we're here to listen.
Okay. First, a little history. I don't object to any of the FEMA stuff, but I have three really serious problems. First, a little history because this property had variances granted before it was even sold for, as a building lot in 1977. And then Stuart, my, our friends, Stuart and Alexandra Baker, put this, well, they put this on, and it was smaller, a shower. And they got a variance that put them three feet, seven inches from my border. I was, but they don't, they didn't use it, and it was ground level, it didn't, it wasn't, it didn't intrude. And then George Walker, another lovely neighbor, moved in, and he, he got all kinds of building permits for the, for the deck up here and for turning these stairs into decking, and then putting out this, this piece here with the hot tub over here. This is just flat, you know, stones, it's just those slates. And so, he, he want, he came over and built this, and so got closer and closer. And so, this, the 14 feet is like here, because my house is 12 feet exactly. Well, not exactly, it's 11, 11.
And we want to get you on the tape, so if you can...
Okay. This is...
You can hear, are you sure?
This, this is 12 feet. So, a 12-foot setback would be, you know, in their house. And they got granted a 10-foot setback, which is what this, this corner is. And then, they got a 3.7-foot setback, which is here. And then, this structure just goes straight across, you know. So, there's so many variances, you know, like, when does it stop? Okay, my specific objections are the stairs. They already have stairs to both deck, and all approved and in place, and they work fine. They're here, and on this one here. And this shows more clearly how it, how close it really is, because this is, this is from the survey when we had our, our bulkhead repaired, which mine did not need. Okay, and so, here, here's the house, and they want to lift this up to here. And they want to put stairs down, oh, well, wait, the whole house is going to be higher. So, they want to put stairs here, up here. They want to bring the house up to here. And they want to put stairs down here, and this deck will come out another eight feet. So, that will be here, over, over this, which is not really a deck. And then, they, they, so they're going to bring this deck all the way out there, and then, so they're going to put stairs smack across here. Oh, well, wait a second, it's all two feet higher, three feet higher. So, it's all going to come there. This is my house, this 1,800 square foot thing.
Yeah. Is your house complying with FEMA right now?
Everything. My living room is 1906, 1908, 1906.
Okay.
I, I did it. I mean, I, I built it the same time Stuart and Alexandra did. Took me two years, took them six months. Okay. And I'm hoping you can help me with this because this is the kind of thing where, we're a nice neighborhood, we all hang out together.
Well, I just want to, we're going to listen to everything you have to say, but I just want to tell you, the last thing that the attorney for the applicant said is that he wants to have his client address your concerns. Okay?
Yes.
So, what I get is that he is willing, and the applicant is willing, to have a discussion with you about addressing your concerns.
Okay. So, that's, that's what it's going to look like. Now, they are, they are talking about the existing footprint, but this existing footprint is not... Over here, this is the view of my bedroom. I know you're not going to hear this, but this is where they want to put, wait, over the window, here. They want to have this come up here, and then they want to, uh, that would be the bottom. The top of the railing would be up here, and then it would come down to here, I think. And then this one, of course, would be the bottom.
Are we getting this on tape?
So, um, this, this is my view. Oh, and their deck will be going out, like, from here to here, and back, and then that will have a railing, and then they'll have stairs out there. So this is my view. Um, yeah, I'm a little lady, let alone, um, I like my sunrises.
I, I understand, but you, I want you to, just so you can appreciate, when, when we have an applicant come to us wanting to make a property FEMA compliant to save their house from storms and hurricanes, that is something we take very seriously. And I understand that it's going to have an impact on adjacent property owners because the, because the building is higher, but we want people to be FEMA compliant. I'll tell you, it's very important to us.
I also, um, now, I have neighbors, I've given you, oh, I haven't. I have some pictures here.
You go to our turn.
I am not, uh, not very good at this. Um, this, um, this shows how close the, um, how close the, the, um, the property is.
We'll pass it along, I promise. If you give, you give it to our, to our attorney, but we'll pass it along, okay?
And then, um, I put a ruler, you know, one of those tape measures through, and it would, um, and you can see it only goes to 30-something. And then, um, I have a picture that shows.
Yeah.
How, how close they are to my house. And one of the things on the last picture shows my.
We're not getting you on tape.
Oh, okay.
This is, the microphone is there because we want to have you on our recording.
So, um, if you look at the house next door, on the other side, their steps don't go this way, they go this way. And there's actually room between this and the door to the, on the ground floor, and, and here, on both floors. But maybe they could turn this, turn the stairs a different direction.
Okay, these are all conversations that can be had between you and the attorney for the applicant, who is willing to have a conversation with you, who's willing to have a conversation with you as the last thing he said. I, I understand you want to get the information on the record, and I'm fine with that, but I just want to tell you, it will be, I think, really important in, in terms of moving forward, if you, you could have a conversation with Mr. Pasca, and, uh, and so that many of the issues that you're talking about can be addressed to see if the applicant is willing to make changes.
I'm, I'm con, I'm hoping that this board will, will also help.
Well, well, okay, well, in terms of.
Can you?
Ultimately, with this application, you know, we, we, it could go a couple of ways. Uh, one way is that you could speak with the attorney for the applicant, and there could be changes agreed to, which we, that, that are made to the application that satisfy you. The other alternative is, we leave everything the way it is, with the applicant's application and your objections, and then we have to decide what to do. I encourage, especially with neighbors, especially when you have an attorney for an applicant who's saying he wants to, to, to address your concerns, to have that conversation, because it does nothing but benefit you. This, the worst that could happen is that you end up back where you started, and you don't have an agreement, but it seems to me that it would be worthwhile to, to have that conversation.
Should I have a lawyer?
Well, that's your, that's your decision.
I'm a retired schoolteacher.
I, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea for people to get legal counsel when they, when they think that they need it, okay? But I'm not, I'm not here to, you know, tell you that you have to in any way, but, but it can't hurt, um, if, if you decide to do that. But, you know, and I also get that this is very, very important to you. It is your, it, it is your, your home, and it's, and you're the adjacent property owner, and it's impacting you.
I'm the, I'm the only one impacted by it, um, because there are no neighbors on the other three sides of them. And I, I built my house in 1980, and I've lived there. I, I live there year-round. I don't go to Florida or anyplace else, and I, I, especially in the winter, I, I truly value that, um, the view and the privacy.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, Anthony, could you come up for a sec?
Sure. I, I'll, we will talk, and, and if you do leave, at least.
Yeah, if you just go over to the microphone.
If you leave, do what you did with the other application, at least leave a 15-day window, so that if we can come up with some.
Plenty of windows.
Some mitigation changes, or, it would only be reductions, if anything, obviously.
I understand.
We wouldn't ask for any additional relief.
Yeah, I mean, my inclination is to have you come back. Um, I'm not sure what other board members are, you know, if they have a conversation just to find out what it is, what changes are, are to be made, and to make sure that the neighbor is happy with that.
I'm, I'm going to say something you've probably heard before, which is, um, there's a tight time period for actually being able to do work like this.
Mm-hmm.
In the off-season. And so every, you know, if we're delayed two weeks, two weeks, two weeks.
What are you doing next to you? Don't worry about it.
She is the most impacted. She's by the 3.7-foot setback, right?
Yes.
I mean, that's, and I know that you said why it's there, but.
Yes.
3.7 feet, I mean, this, you know, this is.
Yeah.
3.7.
And I'll say that there's one.
Significant.
You gave two, two alternatives. One is we agree, another is we just roll the dice on what's there.
Right.
There's the third alternative, which is, even if we can't agree to everything, we still might be able to come up with some.
No, of course.
Some changes.
Of course.
That, even if it's not perfect.
Right.
You know, we still may present those regardless, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I understand. Um, but, you know, I mean, I just, I appreciate the fact that, that you and, and the applicant are willing to have, you know, put the effort into, into having this conversation with the neighbor, um, who is obviously very concerned about, uh, this application.
This is 3.7 feet. This is like half a COVID distance. Okay.
Yeah, so.
Thanks.
So, so my only, you know, question to the rest of the board is, do we want to keep this open and have them come back, or do we want to close?
Yes, I'm okay with.
You want to keep it open?
Yeah.
Keep it open.
Okay, so we got one, two, three.
Open.
Open.
Open, open, okay. All right, all right. So we're going to, so sorry about this, but, um, this is what we're going to do. Uh, we do have room on our agenda at our next meeting.
Which is August 11th.
Yeah.
No, it's 19th.
19th.
19th, okay.
We have 11 applications on for August. Yes.
Okay.
19 and 11 reversed, so we have 11 applications.
Mrs. Kirkbright, you, you did a lot of work here to present your case, and this is the purpose of having public meetings for this, so that in a situation like this, you can come and, and, and share your thoughts. So thank you for all you did.
And it's very thorough, and, and I, and I want you to know, I'm glad that you're here, and I really want to see your concerns addressed, okay? I, I very much do.
Thanks.
But, but I think starting the process this way, with your having the, the conversation with, with Mr. Pasca, would, would be helpful, and then we just see where we are.
Having the lead on the application move, we hold it over for all purposes till August 19th.
Second.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Verges.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Chair, both aye. Thank you all for being here. Uh, sorry we didn't get, get a chance to, uh, get you on, Aram.
For, for the record, I did say the word.
Okay.
Impressed. You can help and take those, that stuff down.
No, we're going to keep all these.
That's Aram.
Okay. Have a good.
Do you want to leave them there or take them down?
I'll take them down later.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take them.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but they're helpful, you refer to them.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, item three on the agenda is Harvey Herman, 146 Red Creek Road in Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-126-3-2. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed addition, artist studio and storage to an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. 330-115C continuance for a principal front yard setback of 20.7 feet where 44.3 feet is existing. Two, to legalize a sunroom that was constructed on an existing deck without the benefit of a building permit. 330-115C for a principal front yard setback of 42.5 feet where 44.3 feet is existing. And three, to legalize an outdoor shower that was constructed without the benefit of a building permit. 330-11 residential district stable dimensional regulations for an accessory front yard setback of 49.5 feet where 75, 70 feet is required. And any other relief necessary.
Court has jurisdiction? Bob?
Good evening. I just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I'm not an attorney.
Not an attorney, okay. So if you can state your name and address, please.
Harvey Herman, 146 Red Creek Road, Hampton Bays.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You can tell us about your application.
Sure. Um, just want to spend a minute explaining why we're building this studio, and, um, and then I'm going to turn it over to, uh, August Muff, who's my, uh, architect, and he'll answer any technical questions. Um, my wife and I, uh, live at this address, 146 Red Creek Road, for 16 years. Um, I'm an artist. Uh, I teach painting at, uh, Quag, and also at Hampton Bays Libraries. Um, and I also show my work. I've been on the cover of DANS and so on. Um, my wife came down with a, um, stroke 14 years ago. My studio is on the second floor of our residence, and up until about a year and a half ago, two years ago, she was able to climb the stairs, but now she can't climb the stairs anymore, and she's an important person to me when I work. So we have not been able to, uh, to paint together. Uh, so now, um, and we're getting on, on, in our years, I'm 88, my wife is 90. We don't have any help, we don't intend to have any help in the house. So what we decided to do is to go out the back door on the same level and build a passageway to a, a studio. And that way, my wife, we tested it out, she can walk on her walker and be able to be with me when I paint. So that's the purpose of why we're doing this. It's, the rest of it I'll leave up to August Muff, who knows much more about this than I do. All right?
No problem, okay. Thank you. August, I just have to swear you in as well, if you can state your name and address, please.
August Henry Muff, architect, and the address is 14 Pine Court, North Hampton, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Um, so why don't you tell us what you want to tell us? I also have comments from the building department, so I guess we can, unless you want me to read them first, we.
If you, if you don't mind.
Want me to read them? Okay, all right. So, and I'm not sure whether you got this already. This is from Marjorie Riley, building inspector, and this is what, uh, we got. And it may be that some of these issues have already been addressed, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Number one, the survey shall be revised to remove the wording 3.8 by 7.3 cantilever as this is a bump out of the dwelling. Two, in order to confirm compliance with pyramid height, the survey and elevations shall be revised in accordance with the following. The volume of pyramid encroachment shall be provided using the accepted method of determining compliance as follows, as directed by the chief building inspector. Uh, the, the method of determining both the height of a structure and the method in delineating the sky plane from each lot line is as follows. Determine the average natural grade prior to disturbance using NAVD 1988 by indicating spot elevations taken at the corners along the side of the facade wall to the dwelling adjacent to the nearest street on the survey. And two, the architect or New York State licensed design professional shall calculate the average using the spot elevations as stated and drawn, um, or draw the pyramid line from all property lines using the grade plane as applied to the subject structures on the lot. Note, this average elevation and the setbacks on the property line must be indicated on the pyramid drawing. This method will establish a grade plane to form the basis for calculating the volume of encroachment. The applicant shall submit this information in order to verify the accuracy of the diagram and pyramid calculations. And three, it shall be noted that the dwelling is one contiguous building as shown on the survey prepared by John Holden and squires Holden and Reisenbacher dated April 10th, 1979, which is associated with pre-existing CO number C05215 dated April 18th, 1979. Four, any gates and fences on the Town of Southampton right-of-way shall be removed or relocated to a conforming setback. Five, any fence over four feet in height requires a building permit. Six, all fences shall comply with 330-103 and 330-109 of the Town of Southampton's code. So, anyway, those are the comments we got.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, members of the board. Um, those, uh, items you'll find have been addressed. Uh, the, um, survey has been revised to show that the, uh, house is one continuous dwelling and one continuous structure. The pyramid law, uh, was addressed by this diagram that shows that, uh, this being the studio addition right here is clearly below the sky plane, and, um, I have, uh, 15 copies of this that I'd like to turn over to you right now.
Sure.
From board.
To our attorney.
And, yep, and so that addresses the, um, the pyramid law. Um, as far as the, uh, uh, sections of the house that were built without the benefit of a building permit, we have the screen porch, which, um, Mr. Herman, uh, tells me that it was built on an existing deck. I have submitted applications for building permits for that to show that it complies with, uh, hurricane regulations and wind loading and the building code and et cetera. Uh, likewise, the, um, outdoor shower, and, uh, there was a, on the original survey, there was a cantilever called out, but it actually was not a cantilever, it's just a bump out, happens to be a laundry room. I have applied for both the shower and that laundry room, uh, showing that it meets, uh, New York State Code. Um, and as far as the addition goes, um, well, let me just talk about this piece of property a little bit. The subject property is on, uh, has two front yards. Uh, it's on Red Creek Road and Gathering Rocks Road, and the, um, Gathering Rocks, Rocks Road happens to be a private road, and that is the road frontage that the addition is 20.7 feet from. And the, uh, the property is in an R40 zoning district where the minimum front yard setback is 60 feet. Uh, the one-story framed dwelling that currently exists was built in 19, in the 1930s, and then, uh, another portion of it was built in 1959. And then finally, in 1979, the second-story studio where Mr. Herman paints right now was added to the house. Um, the existing structure is non-conforming in the front yard of Gathering Rocks Road by, uh, by being 41.9 feet from Gathering Rocks Road. So, uh, we are requesting, respectfully requesting relief from these variances, and, uh, the granting of these variances really will not, um, create an undesirable change in the neighborhood or a detriment to the neighboring properties as all stormwater runoff from the buildings is going to be captured in dry wells, and the sanitary waste will be treated on-site from, as it is right now, uh, from, from the structures. And also, um, only an area variance can produce the benefit that is sought by the applicant. Uh, the, the relief is not substantial since the building is already non-conforming, and , uh, granting of the variance will not have an adverse, uh, in effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood because we will receive approval from the engineering division of the Town of Southampton for the stormwater runoff, uh, control measures that we take, that we take during construction and, and ultimately after everything is built. This difficulty that Mr. Herman has was not self-created. Uh, the, the applicant, he purchased the property with the house situated in, in a non-conforming location, and, um, as Mr. Herman said, he is an artist, and taking care of his wife who suffers. the buildings is going to be captured in dry wells and the sanitary waste will be treated on-site from, as it is right now, from the structures. And also, only an area variance can produce the benefit that is sought by the applicant. The relief is not substantial since the building is already nonconforming. And granting of the variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood because we will receive approval from the engineering division of the Town of Southampton for the stormwater runoff control measures that we take during construction and ultimately after everything is built. This difficulty that Mr. Herman has was not self-created. The applicant, he purchased the property with the house situated in a nonconforming location. And as Mr. Herman said, he is an artist and taking care of his wife who suffers from dementia, Mrs. Herman cannot climb the stairs to get to the second floor anymore. And I have been in the house with Harvey and I contest to the fact that he is her sole caregiver. She doesn't have a nurse or a legal, an aide or anything like that. And I haven't seen it myself, but I'm sure that when she's around him, she actually gets a lot of great joy out of watching him paint. So with that...
For the two things that were built without a permit, did Mr. Herman do those or were those there on the property?
Those were there on the property.
The shower and the sunroom, I guess?
That's correct.
Okay, so there was no information as to how they were built or who built them? We need, go to the microphone. Thank you.
The little bump out, I understand when we got there was for cats, these cats to come in and out. I think the Manders built it so their cats, there was a door on the outside.
Who were the Manders?
They were the previous owners.
Okay.
And when we got there, there was a lot of kitty litter and stuff, so we removed that and put a washer and dryer in the same space.
Okay. Well, the sunroom on the deck, is that what you're referring to? The sunroom on the existing deck, is that what you're referring to?
No, I was referring to the bump out, the little...
I mean, the sunroom. I mean, the sunroom.
Oh, the sunroom, we built it, yes.
Okay, you, did you hire a contractor to build that?
Yes.
And when did that occur?
16 years, 15 years ago, 15 and a half years ago.
And at that time, was the contractor supposed to get permits? Was there any discussion had about that?
No, I think it's my fault, if anything. I didn't think it was necessary because there was a deck there, we just enclosed it. So I didn't file for it. But we did build a number of other things, a garage and many other things and got permits for everything. It was my mistake.
Okay. How about the outdoor shower?
Outdoor shower was there all the time.
Was there all the time?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, the reason I ask this question is not to, you know, make things difficult, but we need to know when structures grow up or put up without permits.
Sure.
And we encourage people to get permits before putting up structures, okay? Because too much of that happens. But I understand sometimes you think that you need a permit and you don't. And when in doubt, always better to ask the town.
I know that now.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
But everything else was there when I came.
Yeah. Okay, okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, I hope that I can shepherd Mr. Herman through that process in the future, so it won't happen again, I can assure you.
Okay, thank you.
So just in closing, we hope that the board will consider these variances favorably and we are able to answer any questions that you might have.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No.
Okay.
I have a question. Why is, why is the proposed location, like, why is that the best? You know, like, it looks like there's a one-story framed dwelling on the other side in the middle, like, why is that access the best?
There is, right where that connector is, is the back door that is the main access hallway of the house. And it's just perfect. Mrs. Herman will be able to walk through there. She's familiar with that hallway. That's the restroom that's down at the end of that hallway is the hallway that she uses. I just dealt with my mother having dementia, so I know that surroundings and things are important to people with dementia. I think that it will help her in getting out of the house easily and, or leaving the house to go into the studio with Mr. Herman.
Okay, well, appreciate your comments. Any other questions? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Herman for 146 Red Creek Road in Hampton Bays? Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the lawyer you told me?
Good evening, chairman, members of the board. David Kurst from Matthews, Kirsten Cooley, P L L C, 241 Panago Road, East Hampton, New York. We're here on behalf of, let's see, six different neighbors who own the seven lots on Gathering Rocks Road. Amy Feldman, who is here with me this evening, she's at 4 Gathering Rocks Road, which is the lot directly across Gathering Rocks from where this proposed addition is being located. That is her front yard. So she's, her house is set back 46 feet from that front yard, which is consistent with what the existing residence is on Mr. Herman's property. And we'll also represent Edward and Eileen McGinty, who are the owners of 6 Gathering Rocks Road. Gila Kaplan and Bert Nesge, the owners of 9 and 11 Gathering Rocks Road. Beverly Gross, the owner of 144 Red Creek Road. Ola Anderson and Veronica Stolt, who are the owners of 12 Gathering Rocks Road. And Elizabeth Marota, who is the owner of 10 Gathering Rocks Road. And now, they're collectively also own the fee to Gathering Rocks Road itself, to the private road. So while...
How wide is that road?
I don't know.
So the road has its own tax map number?
Yes, it does.
It looks like it. I was just asking.
These people have nothing better to do with their time.
But it is, it is a private road, but it does have its own tax map number. They are multiple owners, all of which, while sympathetic to the medical situation of Mr. Herman and his wife, unfortunately have to object to the location of this addition. The existing house is only 44 feet where it should be 60. Now they're asking for a reduction to 20.7 feet, which I disagree with Mr. Muff. That is, this is a substantial variance. This is 20 feet from our property line where it's supposed to be 60, where the existing residence is 44 and is nonconforming. This is a very large lot. This is a 1.8 acre lot in, I believe, the R40 zoning district. There's significant area on this lot to locate an addition off of some other portion of this house where reduce this one and move it back to provide the benefit sought by the applicant without putting this undue burden in a front yard that's going to change the character of the neighborhood. There's areas, as you can see on the survey, either off of the back of the sunroom that is now, the deck was converted to a sunroom, which, if you look at the aerials, I mean, that's a fully, that roof is integrated into the roof of the existing residence. That's, wasn't just some glass box put on a deck, it's fully built into the house. There's multiple areas just north of that two-story section where a further addition could be built without having to be 20 feet from the front yard.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are these people that you represent, how far away are they from the house?
The Feldman residence is directly across the street from where this...
I visited the property. I could not see physically. I looked around. It's like a forest. I couldn't see any other houses from where Mr. Herman wishes to put his studio. So, I mean, they're not like in his backyard. I mean, I'd like to know for each and every person, how many feet are they, feet are they away?
I don't have the answer to that question.
I really need that.
But you can submit, maybe you can submit the addresses?
Sure. Yeah, I don't have the...
Well, not only the addresses, because the address won't tell me necessarily how many feet, because I want to know how this really, really impacts this couple.
Yeah, so to the best of your ability, if you can gather that information.
Okay. And I think, you know, as, it is a private road, but I think it should be treated, there's eight other residences on here, it said Mrs. Feldman's house is, that is her front yard. She would be entitled to that same, if everybody had a front yard of only 20 feet, that would completely change the character of this neighborhood. Nobody has the setback that they're requesting here.
Have any of the neighbors been in communication with...
Yes, they have. So we do take some issue with Mr. Herman's statement that they haven't...
Hold on.
That they haven't been...
Well, all I was going to say is...
They have.
I understand. But as I mentioned in the prior application, you know, if there's a willingness to have a conversation, a conversation could be had, if both sides are willing, and I don't know. And I'm not saying, and nobody has to do that, but if you wanted to, you know, if your clients wanted you to have a conversation to see if anything could be revised to address their concern, you know, I...
We'd be open to that, as far as I understand. I'd have to check with all of them. But I believe there were some overtures made that were, you know, did not proceed.
I understand. Would screening help?
You know, the answer to that is screening always helps. Does it address the concern? No, not completely. This is significant variance in a front yard, affects the other front yards of the other property owners. So, yes, it would help to some degree, but I don't think it alleviates the concern.
And the same setbacks apply there, Katie, on the private road or right of way?
Correct, it's a street frontage.
Yeah.
You know, if this, and I know that the board has historically treated private roads a little differently, but I'm not sure why, you know, this is a, it's a throughfare for all those people. They're entitled to rely on the same zoning code that every other resident does themselves. Say, oh, I've got a front yard, means my neighbor across the street has to have a front yard setback of 60 feet or 45 where there's an existing residence.
But everybody takes access off this road? It's not like a paper road.
Those six, yes, the, there's seven, seven lots, all of them take access. I believe Ms. Gross may have access off of Red Creek as well.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, the other part of this is, and I haven't gone to the property, but, you know, the realistic impact on, you know, on the adjacent property owners of this, you know, whether it really is harmful to their use of their property, I don't know. But, you know, I just, you know, want to mention that.
No, I understand.
The benefit and detriment.
No, I think it, I think it does have an impact to the character of the neighborhood to have this, I believe it's roughly 1,000 square feet, 900 square feet addition, 20 feet from the front yard lot line, where that is not something that is allowed or on any of the other houses in the neighborhood.
Well, I want to go back to what Ellen said, which is, you know, if the closest adjacent property owner is, if their house is, you know, let's say hypothetically, across the street, 50 feet, you know, measured, or 40 feet, you know, I could see an impact. If on the other hand, they're 150 feet, you know...
No, their house is, it's 46 feet from Gathering Rocks. I don't know how, like I said, I don't know how wide Gathering Rocks Road is.
So, 46 feet and they're, you know, a little over 20, I guess, is what they're looking for. So a little over 60, plus the road.
Plus the road.
Plus the road, plus the road. Yeah, yeah.
No, I, your point is well-taken.
Yeah. Yeah. In the weighing of this, I'm not trying to say that, you know, I'm not concerned about what your clients are, you know, addressing here. But, you know, I don't know. I think Brian's suggestion of screening may be what we're willing to do, but I can only speak for myself.
Okay. You know, from what we can see here, there are feasible alternative locations that are reasonable for the applicant to have pursued before they came for the variance, which is, you know, one of the distinct standards, either in reducing the size, relocating it, or both, some combination of the two. This is not, the current request is not the minimum necessary to give them a benefit of a studio on the ground level without creating a detriment to the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood.
Did you mention again that this is almost like a forest?
You guys could speak outside, please, if you're going to speak.
This is, this is not like, you know, a suburb. This is like a forest. So that's one of the reasons when I went there, I couldn't see any houses. And I've been to many, many houses for this board, and I never, in all my years, have ever seen a house that was so distant from any other house. So I have concern about all these people who feel that they are being hurt by this one room that this gentleman, his 90-year-old wife, not, do they all know she's 90 and has dementia?
Yes.
They do.
They know that this, that is the reason so that he can paint. But as you know, these variances are perpetual. This lasts forever. This will be an impact for the, on the neighborhood when the next owner takes over this house, be it, and that lives on. This, there's no requirement that this be used as an art studio. This can be turned into, you know, this is habitable area 20 feet from the property line forever. So I do understand your concern and they are, and I, listening to Mr. Herman speak, I am not unsympathetic and nor are my clients, but there's alternative ways that that could have been addressed other than this, other than this variance that lasts forever.
All you've really told me about is one person.
They are...
And they're 20 feet, right?
They're directly across the street, they are the most impacted. Everybody else lives on the street and owns the street itself.
But you don't know the footage, right?
I do not.
And you could get that to them?
Yes, we will.
I don't understand how I couldn't see any houses.
Okay, all right. So I would just encourage that, you know, if possible, you know, a conversation could take place, but also I want to talk to the applicant and the applicant's agent.
Okay. Just last, you know, we don't object to the variances for the enclosure of this sunroom that's been done for 15 years now or eight years, however long it's been. We don't object to that. We don't object to the outdoor shower. It's just the location of this studio. And the final concern is, we've heard in your notes that the town is saying you've got to remove your fence from the town right-of-way. We would put the same request in as well. This, the fence, Mr. Herman's fence is located in the Gathering Rocks right-of-way, was built without permits on that property. And we would request that if the town's going to ask for the same, that we'd be provided the same benefit to have that fence removed.
Those are different legal standards, so on a privately owned road versus a town road.
They are.
They are, they are, you know, it was built there, as you know, with, without a permit in violation of zoning. We ask that the board take that into consideration and if they are so inclined to grant the other relief to have that as a condition.
Well, I mean, typically our language in a determination is going to be that pretty much, you know, any other permits that are necessary, and it could be that we will put in a condition having to do with, you know, any structures.
That's all I'm asking.
Not on the private road.
Not on the private road, nope. Can't do anything on the private road.
Especially knowing that there's a tax map number assigned to it.
Right, there's adverse possession claims and other claims.
So instead, that may be a private, a private issue that you would have to address elsewhere.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Thank you. All right. You want to come back up? Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, so maybe you can just give us your response?
Well, I listened to what Mr. Kurst said, and I don't know that he understands how the house is laid out and that this hallway that is in the house is really the only location where we can get to the exterior except for the front door of the house. So...
I may have missed it, but perhaps a set of floor plans to the board would be helpful in...
Okay.
Explaining your position when you come back.
Yes.
Because that might show, perhaps provided to Mr. Kurst as well, because that may change people's opinions. I don't know.
Is that because you have to go through a room to get to the outside? Is it...
Yes, you'd have to go through the dining room. That would, if you wanted to get to the front of the house, that would ruin the dining room. You know, you'd have to walk through the dining room to get to this studio.
And so to get to the sun, sunroom, you have to walk through the dining room?
Not the sunroom, the studio.
No, I'm talking about alternative location. And you said this is, you'd have to, you'd have no hallway to use to get to another alternative patient.
That's correct. The alternatives that Mr. Kurst had suggested, there are no hallways there, there is a bedroom there.
Let's say like on the other side, you know, where there's an atrium and another one-story framed dwelling, what's over there?
There's another bedroom there. That's also a bedroom.
It looks like there's a hallway.
There's the...
I think a set of floor plans would clear this up.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have them with you? Okay.
Did you submit the floor plans? Do we have them?
I'm pretty sure I did, yeah. I'm sure I did.
I could have just missed them. I'm going to look again. Did anybody else see them? I thought I might have just missed them.
Well, usually there's like, you know...
Usually for the lead.
It's been known to happen. But I asked if there were.
Ellen, you don't have floor plans?
I'm looking right now.
I'm confirming I do not have floor plans.
I don't either.
These aren't them, right, Augie?
These aren't them.
No, that's pyramid law.
Uh, no, that's pyramid law. This is the floor plan, yeah.
That itty-bitty thing?
Well, it's a shrunken version of it.
Oh, these are them, right here, right?
That's them. Thank you.
Yes, you can. Hold on one second.
One thing, I think I have a larger one.
Yeah, I have the larger one. We have one, we have one set in the cloud.
You found it.
You want me to put one up on the board?
That's the only set we have, so I don't want to add my size. You can put that one up.
You would be mad at that.
Yeah, exactly. And this isn't going to like what I'm doing to this.
Were you done?
I'm done.
No?
I got it, I got it.
So, since this house, the original section of the house, which is down here, this little bungalow area was built in 1939, it was in an ad hoc fashion. Over the years, they added to the house. This is the other area that was built in 59, and then above this bedroom on the second, is the second floor for the existing artist's studio that we have. So, right now, this is the passageway, which Mrs. Herman spends a lot of time in the living room, and this is the restroom that she uses here, and this is the passageway that we'd like for her to go out, and all of these floors will be at the same level. They'll come out, you make a left, you come to the print storage area here, and then there's a supply closet here and an artist's studio here. So, in order to get from this side of the house, there's a, there's a large koi pond right here, which is shown on the survey, which is, on the survey, you see the, the dark line of the koi pond, but there's stone patio and landscaping, mature landscaping all around it. It's actually very beautiful and very zen-like, and you also have some trellis work, like, over it as well, to keep the ospreys from picking out the koi. In any case, I think Mr. Kirsch had suggested maybe that area would be a suitable location, but it's really very high elevation, too. The grade slopes up a little bit there, too.
It would be impossible for her to walk there.
It, it would.
It would be, she could not walk.
It would, and I agree, and this is a bedroom, so you can't access a habitable space through, through a bedroom. So, and then, the front of the house, this is the, the dining room area is right here, and this is the living room, and that's the front door. There's really no place over in this area. This is a very large turnaround driveway right here, which wouldn't be suitable for it, and then, again, on this plan, it doesn't show the koi pond, so this area is not really suitable for it either. It was really designed just in this way, in the, with the idea that Mrs. Herman would be able to traverse through it and egress through it.
Yeah, and I get the sense that there's really no ability, really, to compromise or change the application. You're certainly entitled, the applicant is certainly entitled to leave the application exactly the way it is, okay? That having been said, you know, when we have neighbors that are upset, I always want to try to encourage discussion, but, you know, it does not sound to me like there's an alternative that the applicant is, is willing to discuss. Well, is that accurate? I don't want to speak for-
I think it's-
Yes, let, yes, Mr. Herman, that's a-
When he makes a statement that one, she demises, he'll get rid of that.
I'm shocked by a lawyer and all these people, because I haven't heard, you know, issues from the neighbors, and I thought we were good people for the last 15, 16 years. We haven't had any conversations that have been adversarial or anything like that, but we spent a lot of time trying to figure out where to put this extension. Originally, I was going to try to put in an open area, but my wife can't negotiate any of these open areas anymore, and I built a platform out of the back with, with them to see if she could do it with a walker. Why waste all the money if she can't do it? So, this is the only place that we can build this, and Helene is right, there's, the place is all wooded, and you can't see neighbors. I know the Feldmans are there. I've never met them, except for just to talk to them once in long distance. There's never been an issue with any of the things here, with anybody on the road, so I'm just shocked by this.
I, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But, you know, when we have, you know, neighbors and/or their attorney-
Sure.
You know, express their concerns, I always, you know, try, try to see if the concerns can be addressed.
If the Feldmans want to sit down and talk about this, I'm happy to sit and see if they can work something out. You know, really, I'm not trying to infringe on them in any way. If, if they want to sit down, I'm happy to do it. I did call them, because I didn't hear from anybody from them, but they never returned my call.
But you're willing to have a discussion with them?
Sure, sure.
Okay, all right, well, that's good to know. Yeah, I know.
Do you want them to come back?
I think so, okay. So, yeah, so I think we're going to, we're going to want maybe a discussion to be had and to have you come back. Okay. Unless there's anyone else who'd like to be heard? I'm not sure if there's anyone else who's waiting to be heard. Okay.
Mr. Herman, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If these people want to come in to your house and see-
Yeah, they've never been to my house.
Huh?
They've never been to my-
I know, if they wish to, as part of the-
Sure.
-conversation, you have no problem with them coming in and seeing her, the issue, and how far, all, all the issues that we've talked about today.
Absolutely, no, we're going to-
So, that they can maybe, okay, they say, oh, find another place? Well, let's hear what suggestions they have for this other place that would work, where she can't actually get her body from one place to-
I don't want this to become an issue in the neighborhood. I just, you know, it's not something that I would want. So, whatever is needed on their part, they're welcome to come over and, and spend time.
Okay. So, when would you like to come back?
As soon as possible.
Okay, we, we have a room in our agenda for the, at the next meeting, I believe?
We have 12.
We have 12, okay. All right, stop pushing it? We can do this, no?
Yeah, because we might have to do a German.
Maybe some Germans in there now.
Okay, okay. Okay, but I'm not delete on the applications. But before that, if there's anything else you'd like to tell us?
Yeah, and the road is a very, very wide road. I'm guessing I would, not a, you know, I am an artist and I can visualize things. I would guess the road is 30 feet wide, something like that, maybe, maybe-
You're referring to the pavement?
The pavement, probably, and then-
I believe it's actually 50 with the-
Yeah, if you can provide us the information.
Yeah, and, and then, the line from where we are is another 15 feet, so, I mean, even though the setback we're talking about is 20, 20 feet or something like that, to their house is like, I don't know, 40, 50, 60, 70 feet, 80 feet, something like that, so-
It's maybe 110.
It's 110 feet.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah, to, to their house, so, and it's all vegetation, like Helene said.
Well, we want these numbers refined, particularly the, the closest neighbor, how far away their house is, so-
And all the other people-
They may submit information, and you can as well.
All the other people, I don't even, they're, they're nowhere near where I, where I live.
I need you to get me that footage.
Well, again, that's, that's, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so, so when we come back?
When do you want to bring them back?
19.
Okay.
I'll second your motion.
Pardon me?
I'm seconding your motion.
Oh, thank you so much.
Okay, Ms., okay, Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mrs. DeSessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill?
Aye.
Sheriff, it's aye. Thank you all for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I have four on the agenda, is John Nealan, 23 Bay Shore Avenue in New York, self-cutting that's map, 900, dash 3, dash 1, dash 34.3. Application request for leave from the following provisions of the town code for attached garage, the studio above, on a non-conforming lot. 330, dash 11 residential district's table of dimension regulations, for an accessory front yard setback of 30.2 feet, where 50 feet is required. 330, dash 84D, pyramid height for a pyramid encroachment of 256 cubic feet on the southeast side of the property, and 330, dash 706D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and 330, dash 83C yards to allow the proposed attached two-story garage to be located within the required front yard, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction? Just hold on one second. Karen, so you, you gave me two, a couple full size, and are these smaller sizes or is something?
Um, I received from Inspector Marjorie Riley about-
Well, what am I going to announce? How many different things do I have?
You, with the original application, you have to have two full building plans, and then the rest are-
That's what I'm saying, these are the same as these, right?
Yes, and also the survey.
Got it.
Inspector Riley, when I went to pick up the signs, I received her additional comments, which were really adding additional information.
Go ahead, you can start now.
My original variance is for a proposed accessory garage with a studio on top. That is 30.2 feet from the front yard, when it should be 50, and then, there's also a pyramid for dormer, which is 256 cubic feet. Those two variances that I'm here to ask for have not changed. What more, what Inspector Riley wanted was more information. She wanted the average, average elevation to be confirmed. It's a very flat lot, so I was lucky that I had very cooperative surveyor and architect who were able to work together to get this done. You'll notice it's dated August 3rd.
Okay.
So, that is why I brought it today.
Thank you.
But there really is no concerning the variance. There's, there's, there's just more information, double-checking the pyramid, to make sure that that's correct, according to the way it's calculated by the town of Southampton. Another variance did, there is a-
You can start, like, start, introduce yourself and everything.
Oh, sorry. I'm Karen Pape Murfree, attorney for the applicant. John Nealan and Heather Nealan, I'm the attorney, located at 1 Bayberry Lane, Sag Harbor, New York, 11963. So, I'm sorry. So, anyhow, you know, we made the deadline, so we're very, I'm very excited about that.
Give me a second.
So, anyhow, this is a private development, North Hampton Shores, and it has kind of narrow road. This is a very narrow lot. It's in an R20 district, and it did get a variance. They subdivided this lot. It goes all the way to the water. There's another lot that goes, there's a pond there, that goes right to the water. They have a little community there. There's a pedestrian walkway. My client, really the only place to put this accessory garage is here, because it's all wetlands. I'll, just before I forget, in Inspector Riley's report, she mentioned that the pool, which has a certificate of compliance, is, what is it?
39.
39.2 feet, and it's an accessory structure. It really should be, what is it, 50? It should be 50 feet back, so that's an additional, to clean that up, it was suggested that I, when you say all other necessary variances that that get included, I'm not sure how that hap-
It's there and it has a certificate of compliance, right?
Yes, it does. So, she said, she suggested that I mention that and get that cleared up. It's an unheated pool. Okay, so, this lot is only 100 feet wide. In order to subdivide this parcel, they asked, they asked for 100, they asked for a variance for setbacks, but it ended up being 100 feet wide, when 120 feet is what's needed for the usual width of a parcel. So, I guess that's where the 20 feet went for the accessory structure. Another issue is that it has to be 30 feet, because the septic system is all there. It's only 10 feet behind the proposed accessory garage, so they can't move it back, because the existing septic, otherwise he would have, you know, moved it back, and still would, it would have been less of a variance, but that, that's the situation. So, anyhow, the, the, okay, I mentioned the pool, so, anyhow, Mr. Nealan is a local coach and teacher in the Sag Harbor School District. He's also in charge of maintaining the roads here. So, part of this garage is, he has a pickup truck with a snowplow on it, and he wants to be able to store it in there, and he also has lawnmowers, has a lawnmower that, that he has, that he just has laying out on, in the yard. He wants to clean that up. His, uh, he also, he is a songwriter in his spare time, and I guess his family wants to have him in a separate structure, um, and-
Must not be that good if they're putting him out in the garage.
No, no, but it's all, his daughter is also majoring in art, and so she paints in there, so that's another space. But if you notice on the floor plans, yes, there is a bathroom, but there is no, it's a studio, no sleeping and/or cooking facilities, is, you know, clearly stated on that. Now, the neighbor, which is southwest, he actually has a garage, and he is, let me just see, he is, um, he is, he has a garage that is 24, where do I have it? He has a garage that's 24 by 26 feet, but he's able to meet the, the, it's only, you know, the setbacks, because he doesn't have septic there, but that's what's on the other side right here. And that, I did receive a letter from him saying he's supportive of it, but there's a, you know, there's, it's not interfering, there's a, there's another garage right, right there. It just doesn't have a, a studio, and really, the, the pyramid is for a dormer. So, also, the neighbor behind sent a letter. He has a tennis court here, so that's not really-
Most impacted neighbors are in support.
Yes.
You're constrained, because you have a road, you have wetlands, you have an existing septic system.
Yes.
You're asking for relief from the road, not putting it closer to a neighbor, and the neighbor, the adjoining neighbors, most impacted two neighbors, which are on the-
And they both have letters of support for them.
Correct.
And then, the other person's further away. So, that's basically-
I am too. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
I don't have any issues with it.
Okay, so I'll just-
Can I ask a couple questions, Seth?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Sure, sorry.
But, Katie, could you confirm the setbacks? Is it, is it 50 feet from front line, or is it 40?
It is 50 feet for an accessory structure.
It's an accessory structure, it's not connected to the house. If it was connected to the house, it could be 40, but since it's an accessory structure, detached, it's 50 from the front yard.
Okay, and what is the side setback?
10.
10 feet, so he meets that.
Okay, I just want to confirm.
No, no.
Yep.
I understand.
And pyramid relief is minimal, absolutely minimal.
A dormer that side and slanted the roof, should look like thing.
Yeah.
Thought of that in trying to minimize the amount of relief requested.
Yes.
So, anyhow, and I have from the neighbors, some letters. Great.
I made copies, exhibit A. And then, this is a neighbor that, you know, they had to email me, because, they had to email me letters from, so this is, um-
Katie, before I get off of the setback for the side yard, if it's a, if it's a parcel of land that's 46,000 square feet, is the setback 10 or is it 20? twenty?
I can't hear what you're saying. If the parcel is what?
Is forty-six thousand square feet. Is the setback ten or is it twenty? I looked at the chart for accessories. It says between forty thousand and sixty thousand, it's twenty.
This, this is an R twenty zoning district, so it's an oversized lot.
You're right with an R forty zone on the chart, but the lot itself is R twenty, so that's where it gets confusing.
Okay. And then, and I just wanted to ask one other question. Never mind, never mind.
No, no, ask.
No, no, no. I saw it in my head while I was thinking about it.
Okay. And any other questions or members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Nealon? This is her property located at twenty-three Bay Shore Avenue in Neuk. If not, Susan.
So Karen, just follow up with Marge because you just submitted a few questions in the survey. Make sure that they address all her comments.
Okay, yes, I will.
Okay, so I will move to close the public hearing with written submissions for August twentieth with a decision on September second.
Second.
Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Botsai.
Official and actual.
Thank you for being here. We're not allowed to take breaks anymore.
No breaks.
Yeah, no breaks.
You can pop out.
I will.
Yeah, I'm going to as well.
Thank you very much. My mother died.
Why don't you call the next one and you and I can run out for a few minutes because, you know, we're going to stop all dictating.
Reading a secret.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to read it for you, Mr. Tuthill?
You're taking a break. I'll read it.
Come on, number one.
Number eleven, Round Dune Inc.
Wait, first, you want to do a secret later? Do a secret one. Go ahead.
We'll do secret after.
One oh one Round Dune Road. Is there anybody here for the application? Whoever's here, come on up.
Okay. Brian, uh, you take over just for a couple of minutes. I'll be right back.
Very good.
I'll meet him.
We just have to have four in the room.
Let's go.
Ready.
Bring it on, bring it on.
There are three leaving.
So we have the full four.
We have four.
We have four.
All right. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, we're good.
So we have a quorum.
No, no, go ahead, Adam. We're good.
They don't?
No.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, Aram Turchuny and First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York, on behalf of the applicant Round Dune Inc.
And I think I've been previously sworn in. So you're continuing to be sworn in.
Okay, good. Um, so uh, we've been in front of you a number of times. We, uh, we adjourned at the last um meeting when you switched from Zoom to live. We couldn't get our acts together in time. Um, but we submitted a lot of material to you. We have, with this here, Karen Hoag is here, the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Richard Sussman, who's the president of Round Dune Inc., and Joyce and Gail, who are residents of Round Dune. If you would like to ask them any questions, Mr. Sussman, I believe, is going to speak. But just to round up, uh, this is a GeoCube reinforced dune that was permitted by the DEC and the Southampton Town Trustees.
Right.
It received a permit, uh, an emergency permit from the Building Department. We extended that permit to the maximum amount and we're in front of this board now to ask for that period to be extended to line up with the Fire Island Inlet to Montauk Point project, which is intended to restore the beach, which has been damaged as a result of the construction of Shinakak Inlet and and scouring of the downdrift beach. Uh, just to give you an update on that project.
Continue to sworn in, sworn in from the last time.
Really? Okay.
So just to give you an update on that project, uh, it it's moving along. Right now, the, the construction period is scheduled for twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're trying to move that forward to twenty twenty-two. We have to get a, a series of easements in order to do that. Southampton Town is actually a signatory to that project. They have a signed contract with the state of New York and the federal government to be a partner in the project. Uh, just for reference, the overall Fire Island to Montauk Point project is a one point seven billion dollar project that's being paid entirely by the federal government. Approximately six hundred and sixty million of that is for beach restoration and about four, about four miles of it is going to go from essentially Road K into the eastern third of Quogue, which covers, uh, of course, the area in front of Round Dune. So that project's moving forward. I'm actually, uh, working with the town attorney's office to try to arrange the easements, which the town is responsible for getting. And what we, uh, what we simply ask this board to do is to extend the timeframe that that the structure is in place to line up with what, uh, the remediation that is scheduled to occur and paid for. The money is actually in the bank with the Army Corps. And um, uh, we, we think that the alternative of removing it at this point just exposes unnecessarily the foundation of the building, which is built in nineteen sixty, uh, to damage from even minor storms because there's simply no dune left. It's all been eroded away by the scouring of the inlet. Um, we're fully in compliance with all of our permits. Uh, we, uh, we regularly supply monitoring reports, both periodically and after storm events. And we, um, and there's no observable environmental impact that has occurred. And uh, we, we think that, uh, are, are in, in light of those facts, our request is reasonable.
Thank you. So I'd like to share a few comments with the, with the board. So this has been going on for a little while. Um, I've reviewed the previous transcripts when we were on Zoom and otherwise. Um, this is not a case of first impression for us. We've seen this and we've approved this previously. Um, I would not personally be in agreement to give you a timeline extension. My personal opinion is I think they should remain in um, either until the restoration is done or until the next storm event, in which time they'd be exposed, which would be consistent with our previous decisions, that if they were exposed during a storm event, you'd have to come back and they would, we, there would be a decision made at that time about removal or otherwise. But um, in my mind, that would be consistent with what we previously approved, that they can remain in until a storm event. And I personally wouldn't put, I understand you're asking for a, a time period, but I don't know what's going to happen in that time period. So if they were exposed, as of now, taking them out in my mind would be more detrimental. But if they were exposed during a storm event, that situation could change. Um, so that was my comments and thoughts to the board in terms of from reviewing this previously and looking at previously approved decisions um of a similar request.
And I just want to mention, you know, Mr. Tuthill is, ran out for a couple of minutes, but he had mentioned, I believe, at the last public hearing or the one before, I think it was the last public hearing, uh, that he only wanted to extend it in six-month increments, uh, if, if, if there was an, an inclination on the part of the board to extend. Um, so, uh, you know, to pretty much keep an eye on exactly what's going on with this. And I understand there's this remediation and there is a timetable on that. Um, so, I mean, that was, those are his comments, not mine, but I just want to, you know-
Yeah, and those, those are Keith's comments. And, and I would just suggest to the board that six-
Six months, I don't think is reasonable in terms of filing a new application to come back.
And I'll say that when Keith comes back in, but, you know, yeah, six months is not reasonable. By the time, you know, I mean, I don't have the application in front of me, but when did you file this application?
January or-
So even, even-
Oh, September. Yeah, right, right after it expired, right, yeah.
You know, I think-
We're not giving it permanent. If, if we were to go forward, my, my vote would not be for a permanent approval. It would be a temporary approval until the next storm event or until the restoration is done.
Subject to. I mean, just, just, uh, so the board is aware, um, both the DEC permit and the trustee permit require us to keep the sand covered and we in fact have a performance bond, uh, with-
I wouldn't say that because if it's exposed, I want you to come back and we could talk about removing them because at that point it wouldn't be more detrimental.
Performance bond is posted with who?
Town of Southampton.
Through who?
Uh, through the, through the coastal erosion.
No, but right now?
Yes, presently.
As, I don't understand because I thought the prior permits expired. I thought the bonds were called. So the town has a bond right now?
I believe the town is still in possession.
I think it's the cash.
Okay, ho, ho, hold on. We can't, we can't. We have to get you on tape if, if you want to have comments, okay?
You all, you all want to sit up here?
Whatever you want to do. Just unless you gave previous testimony, I have to swear you in.
I'm an attorney, Karen Hoag from Timulate. I just want to give you a copy of the town resolution regarding the-
Thank you. What is your name?
Karen Hoag.
Hope?
Hoag, H O E J.
Okay. So, Mr. Sussman, if you would care to address the board? Okay. And you were previously sworn in?
No.
No, okay. Then if you can state your name and address.
Uh, Richard Sussman, one oh one Dune Road, East Quogue.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Richie, can you just go your last name for me?
S U S S, all as in son, M A N.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, okay. So I, I've been the president of Round Dune for just over eight months, I guess. Um, the previous president, Michael Cates, has spoken to you a, a couple of times. Um, you know, I just, first of all, the whole community thanks the board for what they've done so far. The GeoCubes are, you know, very important to us. Um, I assume you've all been there at one time or another and can see what the storm did to our dunes. Uh, before, they were really grand and protective. They're not quite that now, but with the GeoCubes, we do have something. And, you know, we have, uh, maintained them and kept them up. And they're very important to the seventy-four apartments that are there. I think that at this point, they really do provide the only reliable source of protection from a storm because of the depleted nature of the beach and the dune. And removal of them would obviously, um, impact the ability to protect the buildings during a storm. The, you know, upcoming project is supposed to rectify this situation, which wasn't, which was not created by Round Dune, but which was logically created by the inlet and the changes that made to the beach and, and whatever. And, you know, the town is part of the problem and is part of rectifying it. And we just ask that we be given the time to be able to do that. That's, that's really what I have to say. And we appreciate the board's um, cooperation in doing this.
Okay.
Joyce, did you want to say anything?
Okay.
Joyce, uh, is another resident of Round Dune and she's the vice president of the board as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Joyce, I had to set the swear you in. You can state your name and address, please.
Joyce Doyle, one oh one Dune Road, East Quogue.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Oh, sorry, Joyce, did you say your last name was Doyle?
Doyle, D O Y L E.
Thank you.
Okay, if you can now tell us your comments.
Okay, I've been a resident at Round Dune since two thousand nine, although I had a small cottage in East Quogue for many years before that. It was sort of a, a dream come true to, to be able to get a place close to the water. And what happened to us in the last couple of years was from the storms was really sort of earth shaking because it looked like two of our buildings were about to go in, in the ocean. And the GeoCubes are really what saved us. And uh, I, I really would like them to stay there until the FIMP project comes so that the, we aren't put back in that danger again because it only took a, a very short time and one storm to put our, our buildings in such jeopardy so that we really would appreciate whatever you can give us in terms of time to, to secure our buildings until the FIMP project is finished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Aram, I had a couple of questions for you. One of the things I've been grappling with, with all the, you know, the, the submissions and there's a, a lot of material, um, the, the storms that have happened in recent years, how much of the dune and of the beach has, has been lost, I, I, generally? Oh, um, I, um, hang on. Uh, we had provided for you a, a table. In fact, there's a timeline that was submitted, I think, in our last submittal. Yeah, yeah. Uh, that went from the, from nineteen sixty to the present time. Uh, and associated with that was a, um, a, a table or in a previous submittal, a table of how much sand that they've placed and, and what it was cost. The cost, in my recollection, was over half a million dollars. And I think the amount of sand placed was, I have to look it up. But the distance lost from when the buildings were constructed in nineteen sixty to the present is, of, of beach loss is about a hundred and fifty plus feet and dune loss is about a hundred. So, you know, um, and, you know, what happens with, with dunes is if you lose, you know, five or ten feet from a storm and you have a hundred feet, you don't really notice it. But if you have twenty feet and you lose twenty feet, you're done. And that's what happened in the last series of storms. Even though they had replaced the dune and pushed it out twenty feet, that storm in, I think it was October of nineteen just took it right out. Yeah. Well, I mean, and, and the reason I'm asking about it, and I, I know I've asked about it, you know, in, in other ways before, you know, is that, uh, for, um, you know, from my perspective, uh, you know, this is, uh, you know, an extension of an emergence, emergency authorization. And, you know, and so I'm trying to, uh, understand the, you know, the, the direness of the situation in, in terms of the, the danger to the structures. And I do appreciate that you, that there is material that, that does go over this, but I'm just asking for more, well, just asking for, for whatever other information you could, you, you can give us. Well, yeah, you know, I, I explain it, you know, in, in two ways. You know, beaches are like bank accounts. And when you have ten thousand dollars in your bank account and you're losing a hundred dollars a month, you don't really notice it. But when you get down to a thousand dollars and you're losing a hundred dollars a month, it becomes critical. And that's what's happened on this beach. This is a process that's been occurring since probably nineteen thirty-eight when the inlet was open, but really when it stabilized in the sixties and, um, the late fifties, early sixties when they put the stone jetties in. And what happened is that over time, that bank account just kept getting whittled down to the point now where we have zero in the dune and all we have in front of it is a beach. And so the, they've repeatedly put the dune back only to have it wash away again, whether it was a month or six months or two years. And so what that demonstrates is that the beach in and of itself is not going to stop the storm surge because it gets overtopped by the, by the water. And the waves are then allowed to run right across the beach into the dune itself. And dunes, in, unless it's a dune that's a hundred feet wide or something like that, it doesn't have enough to give. There's not enough of a buffer. And so we're basically just backed up right against, if we have a storm surge of four, five or six feet, the beach goes underwater and those six-foot waves just come crashing into the dune. And if there isn't something there to stop it, it's going to go right under the buildings and those pilings, and we showed you photos of them, they're just, you know, they're, they're put in nineteen sixty and they're doing a great job, but they're not going to take that kind of pounding. Right. And, you know, you could have one, you know, I don't even want to say it, but, you know, hurricane, you know, that, that, that could do it or it could be, uh, you know, a, a couple of, two or three nor, nor'easters that could- Which are sometimes more devastating because they stick around and they're more frequent. Yeah, yeah.
Are there plans to like shore up the pilings? I mean, if you said they've been in there since nineteen sixty?
Can't, can't really get to them because they're, you know, the, um, you know, short of lifting the buildings up and repiling the structures, there's just no way to do it. We had Delandro Andrews Engineering take a look at them when they're exposed and they're like, listen, you know, you can't really fix them without moving the buildings and repiling them. And so the, the only thing you can do is protect them. Okay. Well, that information is helpful, um, at least for speaking for myself. Um, Keith, I just wanted to mention when you were out, there was a discussion about your suggestion, I believe at the last meeting, about six-month increments on this application. So anyway, I did, um, speak up on your behalf to, 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 to mention what you, what you had said. And, um, Katie, you know-
Keith knows.
You mentioned that, that, you know, she thought that this is too short.
Six months is not sufficient for-
So anyway, just wanted to, you know, let you know. You, you can watch it when you, you know, watch the tape for the five minutes when you were-
We can watch it together before the next meeting. We'll put it on and then-
Okay.
I wanted to go back to Brian's, did you want to say something?
No, go ahead.
Uh, Brian's, uh, suggestion. Now, if, if those GeoTubes get exposed, is it your obligation now to recover them with sand?
Yes.
It is.
And that's bonded, correct?
Correct.
That's bonded, yeah.
That's not what my suggestion-
That, that's not what your suggestion is. Your suggestion is if they get exposed to revisit them.
Remove.
Why?
What the board had said in a prior one was that if they get, if they get exposed, then they go back to, uh, Janus.
Yes.
Yes. They, because now they have a quote unquote emergency. Now they've been exposed, now there's dire circumstances. Now they go back to Janus, who's the coastal erosion hazard administrator, and now they try to get something, some other new means of temporary, um, temporary beach-
Well, you revisit the facts of the issue.
Right, but not before this board, before the coastal erosion.
And, and then based upon whatever decision that is, either we would get a permit or we would come back to this board.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
I, I could support that. Um, and, but the other question is, is once FIMP is completed, are you then obligated to remove them?
Well, not right now. We, you know, the, both the DEC and the trustees gave us a permanent permit. Um, but, but we, we, but we came to the board for a time extension because we, um, it just seemed the most logical thing to do.
So assuming that they were not exposed or, or what have you, um, once FIMP was done, they would not be removed?
You know, I, I wouldn't think it would be logical to, to remove them. It's, you know- It's, you know, the knock on any protection structure is that when it's actively involved in the surf zone, you have negative environmental impacts. If it never gets involved in the surf zone, you can't have environmental impacts. So, you know, if it was that we needed to come back to this board and to review those facts, we would do that.
But when the Army Corps comes in and they do this restoration, is the plan just to dump more sand, or are they going to be doing other things?
No, they're just dumping sand.
Just doing that.
Yeah.
And for the record, GeoCubes simplified, are basically sand in burlap bags.
Yeah.
Just for the record, I mean, we're not talking.
Yeah, no, it's not like they're full of concrete or something.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, and it's beach-compatible sand, they had to have it tested and everything.
Correct.
Yeah. On the other hand, you know, this was supposed to be.
It was supposed to be out, I'm not discounting that.
Relief for, you know, an emergency is not intended to be permanent.
Correct.
But, yeah, it would really be up to us.
Yep. That's what I would support, coming, you know, going back to the permitting process once and if exposed.
I think that's acceptable to my clients.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
I mean, we've seen what happens. Remember the '90s, in the western part of the town, when nothing's done, those houses washed away, they had to be rebuilt, you know.
That was only $8.8 million to fix that, plus another 25 on top to put it back.
Someone's cheaper, just headed it off, right. So, I think this is a very similar situation, and I think it's a reasonable solution.
Great. All right.
Having the lead on this one.
Yes.
Are there any other members in the public that would like to comment?
Anyone would like to be heard, come to the application of Round Dune, Inc., for 101 Dune Road in East Quogue. Does not appear to be any takers.
Any other board questions or comments? You're sure you know when to move, we closed the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions till August 20th with a determination on September 2nd.
Second.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Katie, secret?
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Was Mr. Kelly the one who seconded?
No, that was me.
Oh, that was you, okay. Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Kern.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Cludhill.
Aye.
Sheriff, what's that?
You can do the secret with the decisions.
Okay.
There's two people here.
Thank you, have a good night.
Genius. Evil genius.
Okay, item 12 on the agenda is Mia Rowe, 872 Millstone Road in Bruchantin, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-36-1-20.26. This is held open from our 7:15 meeting. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Timothy S. McCully of Council, the Burke &amp; Sullivan, 41 Meeting House Lane in Southampton. The last hearing where you took evidence was on June 3rd. Karen Murfree appeared for me. I just want to go back and do a little correction of some of the record and go over some of the relief that the building department is requesting that you grant to us. First of all, the property is 54,000-plus square feet. It's entitled to R40 by virtue of the subdivision. It's Lot 3 on a Millstone Road Associates. The property is surrounded on two sides, on the south and the west, by open space owned by the town of Southampton. The northern property, we have a consent from that neighbor. As Karen, I think, indicated, I had a conversation with Mr. Jackson, who owns the property to the east. He was not, per se, objecting to our application, but he was concerned about, he thought the wall, he wanted something done with the retaining wall to be sure that it was stable. In the building permit file, and I think I gave you a copy of it, Steve Lemansky from Southampton Engineering had looked at that wall, the building department had requested him to do that, and he found it to be safe. I had raised the issue of whether it was a five-foot wall that needed a variance, but I've gone out and looked at the property, and in Steve's letter, it's 18 and 1/2 by approximately, or approximately five feet, but it is a retaining wall. And under the code, under 330-109C, you take the average grade, you got zero on one side and less than five on the other. So, I don't think any variance is necessary.
Has a permit been issued for that?
I'm sorry?
Has a permit been issued for that retaining wall?
There wouldn't be a permit necessary because it's under four on the average.
You're probably going to need a variance for that. That section of the town code has changed recently, that's why I'm asking. I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
But that section of the town code has changed within the past, like, month, so that they're measuring retaining walls the same as they're measuring fences.
And that's how you measure a fence? You take the average?
No. No averaging of fences.
Okay. Is that out of the code?
Just recently.
You've never averaged a fence, you've always averaged a retaining wall, but you've never averaged a fence.
Okay. I would ask you to look at 330-109C then, but.
Okay.
But if we need a variance for whatever, it's above five feet, he's saying it's approximately five feet, the building department has not raised that issue with us.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, check.
But, of course, if I need it, I would like you to include it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you should check because if it's really, truly 10 feet tall, you're probably not going to get a variance for it.
It's not 10 feet tall.
I know, but you're saying you're averaging.
Yes, but it's only five feet at the most.
At the tallest.
Yes.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Five feet where four feet is required?
It depends on what yard it's in.
I understand, I mean.
Well, we're going to get to that in a minute.
Okay.
I understand.
Okay, so, basically, also, the notice is saying that these things were built without permits, that's not true. What happened was, the.
Wasn't there a permit for something and they built something else?
No. No. What happened was, they built, they applied for the, to demolish the pool that was behind the house and to build this pool. And they selected this, everybody's looking at a flag lot, nobody's looking at the history of the property, so this becomes the side yard. So, then it would conform, and it was approved by Dave Kanji. Everything was approved, the pool, the barbecue, the outdoor shower, all of it. And I gave you that in a package, I hope you received that package I gave you. Have you?
You got a package, it looks like it came in 7/7.
Yeah. And it has three things in there, what it would cost to demolish, the approval from Dave Kanji, and pictures. So, he goes in, he gets a permit, and then when they were doing the design, when they went to build it, whoever was building it said, well, wait a minute, if it comes out this far, there might have to be another retaining wall. So, they went back and redesigned the pool to have a slight infinity edge so that there wouldn't be any more retaining walls. And they got, they went in and got the permit amended. And that permit was amended, and everything was approved. Then they came back in 2019 for a heating system, and that's when Marjorie Riley picked up on the 2002 variance that a prior owner had gotten, where he designated the rear yard. So, Marjorie said, oh, well, that's your rear yard, this is your front, you have to go get a variance for what you built. So, that's what brings us here tonight. Then, then there's a question about whether or not we're violating required side yards for the principal structure. In the R40 zone, you have a minimum 20 feet and a total of 60. If you look at the survey, we're at 21 feet, which is outside the required yard, and we have 106 feet on the other side. So, I don't know how we fall into that. And if you do, if you do a diagram consistent with the code. Okay, so, this is your front, this is your rear. The shed is not in the required, what's required for the principal building because this is the principal building envelope here. So, if you look at the diagram that's in your code, I don't think we're in that, in a required yard. However, if the board believes that we are, then I would ask for that relief, and I would make one correction. On the southwest, on the southwest corner, they're saying it's 30 feet, that's to the house, not to the pool or the patio. So, it would be 21-7 on both corners, both the southeast and southwest, not 30 feet. Okay? Okay, so, that's where we are with this thing. It was built with a permit and it got amended, everything was done according to oil, but then they picked up on this variance that was granted back in 2002.
That changes the yards, right?
Pardon me?
The prior variance changed the yards.
Well, it designated the rear yard, they got, you, this board granted a variance for the rear yard.
Right.
So, Marjorie's saying, well, you picked the rear yard in 2002, so even though we gave you a permit for this, we shouldn't have. So, go to the variance because we can't ignore our mistake. Okay, so, I want to.
Who's the lead on this? Are they following this?
Adam and me.
Everybody follows everything.
Because it, you know, like, I believe everything you're saying, but it's very different from the testimony we had when Karen was here.
I'm sorry?
I said, I'm just, I'm looking at my notes when Karen was here, and I'm just trying to get it consistent to what.
Well, I'm here.
I know you're here.
You sure?
Unfortunately, I am. So, there's a couple of things I want to point out on the survey. I believe that the shed is in a conforming place, but the surveyor did not put the setback to that north line. And there's a little bit of, and in the pictures I gave you, there's a little bit of a patio that extends beyond the infinity edge to the east, and he's not giving me a setback to that. I think it's another seven feet, and I want to be sure if you're disposed to approve this application, that that definitely gets included. So, there's some touch-ups that I'm going to provide to the board.
Are you going to get a letter from that neighbor that was concerned about the wall?
I'll ask, I'll ask him.
Okay.
I'll ask him. I hope I kept his number, but he called me, so. He wasn't concerned, he, I sent him the letter and he didn't say anything back, I don't know if, he was on the Zoom meeting in June.
Yeah, I mean, this was, wasn't this the one where they were talking about clearing and flooding and the SWF and?
Yes.
It's this property, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he was, well, the clearing is, I think, is okay. Nobody's raised that.
Well, they, no, they raised it at the, that's what I'm saying, they raised, there were neighbors in opposition to this the last time.
There were?
Yes. They were worried about the SWF, they were worried about water runoff, there was a whole, there was a whole.
That's this one, right?
That was Jackson, right?
No, I don't know who it was.
That was, it was a different one.
That's not this one?
No.
I have notes on this one and that.
I can tell you, I had several conversations with Mr. Jackson, this is how it went.
Okay.
He said he was concerned about the integrity of the wall because his property, admittedly is, this is a very, the topography here is up and down, and his house admittedly is lower, and I can see why he would be concerned if that wall were to fall down and everything would come into his backyard. That's why we have the letter from Steve Lemansky. And he also said that there was water runoff from the property. I looked at the wall, I didn't see any evidence of that, he wasn't sure whether it was coming from a sprinkler system or what. But obviously, if that becomes an issue, he needs to report that to the town and let them see if there's actually water running off there. I couldn't see any evidence of it, and I didn't see any weeping pipes or anything that were, that were directing the water. That's all I could tell you on that.
Okay. So, a couple of comments I have.
Yes.
The first is that it sounds like there's a, you're disagreeing with some of the conclusions that Marjorie has made.
Yep.
And in a situation like that, you know, you could have a conversation with Marjorie, maybe you already have, I don't know, about.
I can't, I have to tell you, the other day, I know that your council asked somebody to go look at the actual file and go through it, I got all the surveys, the back surveys and everything.
Yeah.
But I waited for two hours to get in there, I gave up. So, I can, I can email Marjorie and tell her to relook at.
Then email her, I'm just suggesting that you communicate with her.
What suggestion?
Yeah.
Try to set up a Zoom meeting, they're still doing Zoom meetings.
I'm sorry.
On Fridays. She does Zoom meetings on Fridays, so try to set up a Zoom meeting on, through the town website.
I was going to take tomorrow off, but I'll do it. Anyway.
It's going to be tomorrow, just, and Friday.
I'm just saying it will cut through some of the.
Yes, I will, and what I was going to suggest is, rather than put all of this on your plate tonight, I mean, that what I'll do is, if it's left open for comments or whatever, I should put a memo together, get the survey updated the way I'm suggesting.
Yep.
So that you have all of the information in front of you.
That's fine. Now, the other thing I just wanted to mention is, there was a discussion about the fence, fence height and possibly needing relief for a fence, am I misunderstanding that? That you might need variance relief for the fences at the five-feet high?
No, it was the wall.
The wall.
There's a.
The wall that's at the five.
This is a little deceiving on the survey.
Is the wall in the front yard?
According to Marge.
But I'm saying, if the wall's in the front yard, it's too tall, that was the other problem.
It's what?
The wall can't be five feet in the front yard.
I understand that. But I think, we have a disagreement about whether the average or not, I could be wrong.
Okay.
No, no, but.
Wouldn't be the first time.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, I just wanted to point out, you see these walls here? I was concerned about that because I had not been to the property. When I went to the property, I have a picture of it in there, it actually is down below grade. You don't see it. If you're standing on the property, you don't see it.
Okay, but you know, as a board, our history with fences in terms of how we handle them, and walls, it's, you know, the same difference.
If it's in the front yard, it can't be over four feet.
Can't be over four feet, and we rarely grant variances for fences or walls, rarely. And so.
Well, I think if you saw this property, you would want this wall there. This is not a, this, what I'm saying is, it's not, it's not a wall, like, if you're driving down the road, you're going to see it. The whole property slopes down after, after where the house is, and all it is, is it's retaining the property.
Who put up this wall?
Contractor, which, by the way, wound up losing his license.
Oh, that's nice.
My concern, and I appreciate, I think, it sounds like you have a lot of this resolved, but one of the things is, there was testimony that this is a wall in the front yard that's over four feet. Which would need a variance.
If it's, it would need a variance, yes.
And what Adam is saying is.
You ain't getting it here, you're not getting it.
It's.
I'm getting it, I'm getting it, but what I'm saying is, I think you're averaging, okay?
Code change, so we don't average it.
I realize that.
Right. So, I think we have an issue with the wall, that's the concern.
Well, if you want the wall to be cut down.
Yes, that's, I think, what's going to have to happen. If it turns out that it's above.
Okay, that'll have to be addressed.
And so with the building department, because we all know there's ways to, you know, fill it in and step it back and.
I don't want, I don't think you want to do that there because you've got a slope there, and that'll only exacerbate Mr. Jackson's problems, so I don't want to do that.
Yeah, but, you know, going back to what Katie said, you know, we had, besides getting away from the wall, you know, just clearing up the, you know, Karen's testimony and your testimony, maybe you can also listen to the tape from the last time, and I know you said at the outset, you wanted to clarify the record, but if you can. but if you can, you know, just follow up, just to-
Just to set the record straight. I told Karen to raise that issue with you, because I had not been to the property. And if you look at the survey, it looks like these walls are standing out in the middle of nowhere, but they're not. So, you know, but it's an issue that you can't put your head in the sand. So I understand.
Yeah, and sometimes, you know, you'll have two attorneys that will be working on the same application and emphasize different things, and that's fine, but just, you know, want to make sure the record is clear, that's all. Which I know is your-
Yeah, I'm gonna, we'll address the wall.
Yeah.
And then address whether or not I'm in a required side yard.
Yep.
And in the memo, I will reiterate that if in fact that's true, then we have to adjust that 30 feet to 21-7 on that one corner. Otherwise, I'm not gonna get the proper variance. And, you know, it's just interesting that the pool that was demolished was directly behind the house, and it was the same, basically the same distance that this is. But nobody raised that issue about required side yard, so.
Okay, well, just trying to, you know, get everything clarified to as much as possible, and, but I appreciate the, you know, the testimony tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, about everything, so.
All right, so we're gonna fix the survey. I'm gonna try to get a Zoom meeting.
Yep.
And figure out who's right or wrong. And in my memo, I will reiterate that what has to be done, and I'll have to examine with the building department why they didn't say anything about the wall. Because you would think, if they were looking at the wall, and they were asking an engineer's opinion, they would have been looking at the height. Because he's saying it's a one and a half for 18 inches to five feet, or approximately five feet.
Yeah, the court amendment's new, that's why.
Pardon me?
The court amendment's new, that's why.
I mean, I literally just got it, I think, in the last week.
Yeah, it's new.
The new code provision, yeah. They just did it, literally just did it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So my other question is, well, actually, for the board, do we want the applicant, Tim to come back? Or do we want to do written subs?
Oh, maybe, come back.
If the wall's five feet, you're gonna, I don't think you have enough testimony. You need relief for the wall.
I'll have to put it in writing.
Okay.
Well-
If the wall needs a variance, I think it's a tough hill to climb.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's, I don't know what you want to do.
Tough wall to climb.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know what, you know, whatever your pleasure is, if you want to leave it open.
Yeah.
But if the wall doesn't need a variance?
Yeah, if you don't need a variance, you don't need a variance.
Then I, well, then do I have to come back?
And if you need the wall into variance, we can reopen.
We can reopen, if you decide that you want to, you know, make, you know, a pitch to us for the variance for the wall, this-
Yeah, just let us know you want to reopen it.
Yeah, let Candace know, and we'll do it reopening. But in the meantime, so you've got some information to gather and a memo to prepare. When do you think you'd be able to have that? And I know it's guessing, because you don't know when you're gonna meet with Marjorie yet.
The next meeting is the 19th?
It is.
Okay, as far as the survey fix-ups.
Yeah.
That's easy, he doesn't have to leave his office. All he, I just want the survey, if you're inclined to approve this, I want that survey that's stamped approved to have all of those setbacks on it, so there's no question.
Okay, well, normally what we'd be doing is, you know, closing written subs by 8:20, decision 9-2. We, I can do that, and then if it turns out that you need additional time, just let Candace know.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll extend it.
Yeah, I think the only issue that's open, that really needs maybe some more clarification, is this wall.
Okay.
And if Katie's right, from the comments that Mr. DeSessa made, I'd be wasting my breath, I think, so I don't know.
I'll never say it's a waste, Tim, there's always a first.
Yeah, especially if you're caught in between, you know? If this is something that, you know, wasn't an issue necessary.
If the code change while this was pending, we may look at it differently.
Well, that's why I'm saying is that the, I'm surprised the building department didn't raise it, and even under the old code, even if the code changed, it's there.
Yes, but under the old code, you can average it, like you said. So you could have eight and two, then you have five.
Yeah, that's it.
Keith says we're done, so he's seconded my motion. My motion had been closed public hearings, this is application of Roe, written subs, 8:20, 9:20 for decision. I have a second by Mr. Tuthill. Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good rest of your night.
Come on, guys.
Go ahead, Keith.
Item 13, Matthew Lucas, 38 Bayview Drive East in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-93-82. I need a candy.
Really?
Candace has got a bag right over there.
It's right over there. Oh, can't reach it.
What's up?
Are you the candy man? He's making sure you're happy.
He wants to refresh the room.
Up for world peace.
Thank you very much, Bruce, very much.
Thank you, Bruce.
Appreciate it. You were previously sworn in on this one, so maybe you can just give us an update as to where we are.
We were here, I believe, a couple months ago. In that presentation, it was for Karen relief, we were requesting relief of 3,925.3 cubic feet. You asked us to go back and see what we could do to reduce that amount. And so we did, and on July 21st, 21st, we provided you some revised plans. And what the architect did is he lowered the left side of the peak by 1.7 feet. He lowered the ridge, which runs across the whole frontage of it, by 1.2 feet. He lowered the right side peak by 1.2 feet. And he lowered the left side flat-roofed appendage by 1.2 feet. And when he did that, he reduced the pyramid relief from 3,025.3 cubic feet to 2,6881, 2688.1 cubic feet, which is a reduction of about 30%. And that's reflected on the plans before you. I hope that's acceptable. It's a pretty significant reduction.
Significant reduction.
It is for me.
Yep, appreciate all your efforts on getting that done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I-
Bruce, Michael's case.
Hold on, I have a question. Did, I don't even remember. Do you need a wetlands permit for this?
We have one.
You have one, okay. Do we have a copy of it?
You have a copy of the resolution.
The conditional resolution?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good, good. Any other questions?
You all good?
Yep.
Does not appear to be anyone from the public. There's no one other than us in the room, so Mike, it is yours.
Thank you, we will close the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions until August 20th. And you will have a decision on September 2nd.
Second. I want, submissions to when?
August 20th, you have till 8:20. And then, is it August 2nd, or, yeah, August, September 2nd?
September 2nd, the decision's-
9-2.
We're doing that on all our applications, just so you know.
I'm going to make a suggestion, and that is the revised plans that are before you, as I explained to you, bear the same date. So minimum, I'm gonna change that date and give you another letter, so that the variance approval, should you decide to grant it, will be easily traced to the proper plans. He did not put a revision date on that.
Good idea, okay.
I don't want a problem later on.
Good idea.
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, all right, so, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and Mr. DeSessa had stepped out for a minute. Yep, handy for anyone who wants it? No problem, thank you, have a good rest of your night.
Item 14 is an amended decision. And it's Diego and Marlene Quispa, 828 Flanders Row in Flinders, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-143-347.
Yes, I have an amended decision on that application. This is Quispe, as Keith just said. A decision number D021078 dated July 15, 2021, this board granted variances to legalize the construction of a second-story addition and screen room. This decision, however, did not refer to the correct survey date, and also did not identify that the variances were granted for a second-story addition and a screen room. Therefore, decision number D021078 is hereby amended to: One, indicate that the variances granted for the pyramid encroachment were to legalize the construction of a second-story addition to the existing dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. Two, indicate that all variances granted from Town Code 33115C were to legalize the construction of a screen room to the rear of the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. And three, refer to the survey prepared by Jeffrey W. Hatterer last revised February 21, 2020. All other provisions and conditions of decision number D021078 remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Oh, I'll do the secret next.
Now we're up to the decisions.
We are, but I gotta do the secret resolution, too. All right, so I have a secret resolution in connection with the application of DL, DPD-4, LLC.
LPD?
LPD.
LPD-4, LLC.
I'll make sure I wrote that.
I can't even speak with this. Yeah, I should, well, I put my glasses on, then they fog up, and then I can't see at all.
Otherwise, I have to amend it again.
Yeah, okay. All right, whereas, the zoning board of appeals has received a submittal on behalf of LPD-4, LLC for property located at 134 East Montalk Highway Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 90263333.1. And whereas, the submittal has been accompanied by: One, an application for variances in connection with parking requirements at a proposed laundromat; Two, an environmental assessment form; and Three, other correspondence. And whereas, after a review of the submittals, the zoning board of appeals found that this project is a type-one action of the New York, of the New York, under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and coordinated review with the following involved agencies: the Southampton Town Planning Board, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and Suffolk County Department of Public Works, each of which was notified of such application. And whereas, the Suffolk County Department of Public Works, by letter dated July 6, 2021, indicated that the Suffolk County Sewer Agency does not want to assume lead agency, noting that, one, it reserves the right to comment on the project; two, it would like to be informed and copied on all actions; and three, the project proposes to discharge the sanitary wastewater to an onsite septic system, and therefore does not fall within the jurisdiction of the Suffolk County Sewer Agency. And whereas, the Southampton Town Planning Board has indicated that they would like to assume lead agency status in connection with the SECR review of this project, now therefore be it resolved that the Southampton Town ZBA hereby agrees that the Southampton Town Planning Board shall assume lead agency status with regard to the application of LPD-4, LLC pursuant to six New York CRR, section 617.6B. And be it further resolved that this board directs that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Southampton Town Planning Board, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and Suffolk County Department of Public Works.
Second.
Mr. DeSessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Determination in the matter of 369 Sag Road in Sagaponix, Hanley Farm. The premises is located at 369 Sag Road, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-56-1-15, and is approximately 569,035 square feet, an lot area. And is used in connection with the following decision located at 331 Sag Road, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-56-1-16, which is comprised of 108,900 square feet. The premises are owned by Hanley Farm LLC and Josiah Foster LLC, respectively, both by deed dated November 21 of 2012. Both parcels are located in the CR80 zoning district. Subject premises benefit from a C of, many C of Os as outlined here. Karen Pate Murphy, the attorney for the applicant, explained that both parcels, this decision and the next decision, are used in connection with farming, and, but because they are in the residential district, the height of fences were in question. It does meet the five-part test. Therefore, for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from the following provisions of Town Code. Section 330-109, fences, walls, accessory driveway structures, and clotheslines for a proposed eight-foot-high agricultural deer fence that runs along the perimeter of the subject property, with the exception of the southerly property line that measures 309.44 feet along the southwest property line that measures 366.55 feet long on a non-conforming lot. 330-109A to allow an eight-foot-high fence to be located in the required front yard, where a maximum height of four feet is permitted. Town Code Section 330-109A2 to allow the eight-foot deer fence to be located in the required side and rear yard, where a maximum of six feet is permitted. And Town Code Section 330-109A3 to allow the proposed fence to have a height of eight feet, where no fence or wall shall have a height greater than six feet, as a, on the survey by Smith of, Robert Smith of Holden, Weisenbacher &amp; Smith, dated October 5 of 2012, last revised February 12 of 2021. The granting of this relief is conditioned upon the following: Agricultural activities must exist on the premises. Once such activities cease, the fence must be removed. There shall be no additional vegetation, vegetative screening on the outside of the deer fence. Fence must be kept clean of garbage and debris on both sides. And for, the fencing shall be constructed of typical materials, including but not limited to wooden fence posts. The granting of relief is also conditioned upon the other permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Second.
Mr. DeSessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And then the adjoining decision for that, which is Josiah Foster LLC located at three thirty-one Sag Road in Sagaponic, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash fifty-six dash one dash sixteen, does meet the five-part test. It is- have the same effect. We did find the same- the board does propose the same findings. It is conditioned upon the same as the previously read decision that specifically that if agricultural farming activities are to cease, the fence must be removed.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Decision of determination in the matter of ninety-nine Crescent Street, Loris Nazarian's in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash seventeen dash one dash two. Applicant, I'll read the relief at the end. The premises is located at ninety-nine Crescent Street, New York, town of Southampton, County of Suffolk, State of New York. Identified nine hundred dash seventeen dash one dash two. It's approximately nine thousand four hundred and twenty-two square feet in the R forty zoning district in AE six flood zone. The premises is a waterfront lot on Upper Sag Harbor Cove. The benefits from a CO. The applicant, Mr. Arzett and Architect Paul Cuccio appeared and testified they are seeking relief in order to construct a two-story, thirty-three-hundred-square-foot dwelling and swimming pool on a non-conforming lot in New York. He had applied to the board back in twenty-sixteen for variances, only discovered that he required a wetlands permit from the Conservation Board. Subsequent to twenty-sixteen, he finds himself before us in twenty-twenty-one, seeking final approval. The board granted similar pyramid relief variances. The ceiling heights are ten feet on the first floor, nine feet on the second, a flat roof on the property. Of specific note, the owner is six foot five inches tall. They are requesting eighteen hundred cubic feet of relief, which we'll read at the end. Neighbors Stephen Lothler, Ed Jablonsky, appeared in favor of the application, as well as other neighbors. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed two-story dwelling: Town Code section three thirty-eighty-three-K yards for a principal rear yard setback of twenty-eight point five feet at the westerly side of the dwelling where thirty feet is permitted and seventeen point eight feet at the easterly side of the dwelling where thirty feet is permitted. Two, Town Code section three thirty-eighty-four-D pyramid for a proposed encroachment in the amount of two thousand four hundred and eighty point six cubic feet. And two, for the proposed swimming pool, Town Code section three thirty-eleven for an accessory front yard setback of thirty-six feet where seventy feet is required. And for an accessory side yard setback of thirteen feet where twenty feet is required. This relief is granted for structures as shown on the survey of Paul Borowski Land Surveying dated March thirteenth of twenty-fifteen, last revised August second of twenty-twenty-one, and the plans and elevations prepared by Michael C. Gentile dated last revised July seventh of twenty-twenty-one. This relief is subject to other conditions such as permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval.
Second.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I have a decision in the matter of the application of David and Abby Salzen, Fifty Hawthorne Road, Schenectady Hills, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash two thirty-two dash two dash nineteen. I'm going to read the relief at the end. We're going to grant for- this passes the five-part test. For the proposed two-story addition to an existing one-story dwelling relief from Town Code three thirty dash eleven, residential district stable dimensional regulations for a principal total side yard setback of thirty-six point three feet where sixty feet is required. And for a principal rear yard setback of sixty feet where seventy feet is required. Two, for the pro- proposed one-story deck over the lower level of the house on the west side of the proposed addition. Relief from Town Code three thirty dash eleven for a principal total side yard setback of fifty-nine point eight feet where sixty feet is required. And three, for the proposed patio on the east side of the proposed addition, Town Code three thirty dash eleven for a proposed accessory side yard setback of thirteen point two feet where twenty feet is required. Two, three thirty dash seventy-six-D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And three, Town Code three thirty dash eighty-three-C yards to allow the proposed patio to be located within the required minimum in total side yard of the principal dwelling. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Robert H. Smith of Squires Holding, Weisenbacher &amp; Smith, surveyed September seventh, twenty-eleven, last revised August fourth, twenty-twenty-one. And the floor plans prepared by We Plus Architects dated February ninth, twenty-twenty-one. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Mr. Daley? Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
A decision in the matter of Charles White and Mary White, property located at one oh-three Ponquag Avenue in Hampton Bays, New York, Tax Map nine hundred two ninety-six, one lot forty-one. I'm going to read the requested relief at the end. At the public hearing, Wayne Brun, a squier agent for the applicant, testified that the applicants are seeking to construct in addition to the dwelling, including decks and other structures. Mr. Brun explained that the lot lines of the subject premises form what is essentially a parallelogram and are not oriented perpendicular with the street. The existing improvements are lined up with the street, however, making the existing as well as the proposed improvements closer to the northerly lot line since they are not at right angles with the lot- with the lot line. Most of the proposed improvements are being added to the northerly side of the property. Mr. Brun testified that the owner of the property, adjacent to the north, is a family member of the applicant and is in favor of the application. Therefore, and for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from Town Code one for the proposed front porch addition, one, three thirty dash one fifteen-C continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback of ten point four feet on the south side of the dwelling where eleven point four is existing, and a principal total side yard setback of twenty-five point three feet where twenty-six point three is existing. Thirty-three- three thirty dash eighty-four-D pyramid height for a total encroachment in the amount of fifty-six cubic feet, twelve cubic feet existing, forty-four cubic feet proposed. For the proposed one-story dwelling addition, three thirty dash one fifteen-C continuance for a principal minimum side yard setback of ten point eight feet on the northern side of the dwelling where eleven point four feet is existing, and a proposed total side yard of twenty-two point two feet where twenty-six point three is existing. And three thirty dash eighty-four-D pyramid height for proposed encroachment in the amount of two cubic feet at the northwest side. And three, for the proposed deck addition at the north side of the dwelling, three thirty dash eleven residential district table dimensional regulations for a minimum side yard of ten point five feet where twenty feet is required. And three thirty dash seventy-six-D placement of accessory buildings and structures and all- and uses in all districts. And three thirty dash eighty-three yards to allow portion of the proposed wood deck to be located within the total required side yard for the principal building. All for structures as shown on the survey made by Twin Forks Land Surveying last dated March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one, which shows the existing structures and the proposed improvements, as well as the architectural rendering made by Thomas D. Blor, architect, dated March tenth, twenty-twenty-one, which show the proposed improvements. Granting of this relief is subject to the conditions of such other permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the structures and the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Decision in the ma- decision in the matter of Timothy-
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, 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 I-
Okay. Decision in the matter of Timothy and Sandra McGrath, twenty-one Jones Road, East Quag, New York. I want to read the requested relief at the end. At the public hearing, property owners Timothy and Sandra McGrath testified that prior to constructing the deck with a roof overhead, they consulted the Town Building Department.
Oh, yes, I have that.
And they claimed that they were told that the deck was made of wood, they did not need a permit. All this forward finds it unlikely that the Town Building Department advised the owners that they can build a deck without a permit as long as it's made of wood.
They don't have a-
It's certainly possible the owners made a good faith error. The improvements are a common amenity in the hamlet of East Quag and will not be a detriment to the neighborhood. Passes the five-part test. Therefore, in the interest of justice and for reasons set forth herein, this board grants applicant relief from Town Code one. Legalize the deck attached to the front of the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit, three thirty dash eighty-three-A, four yards to allow a deck that is higher than one foot above ground level to be located within the required front yard. And two, to legalize a roof construction over a portion of the front deck without the benefit of a building permit. Three thirty dash one fifteen-C continuance for a principal's front yard setback of thirty-three point four feet where thirty-nine point nine feet is existing for structures shown on a survey made by Robert V. Haltzman Land Surveying, PC, last dated July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, which shows all improvements. The grant of this foregoing relief is conditioned upon the applicant moving the existing shed to a conforming location and obtaining all of the necessary permits or approvals by the town of Southampton Building Department.
Second.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
In the matter of the application of Alyssa McLean and Andrew-
Sorry, Matt, before you do that, can we do a reopen for submission? Because I did get their revised survey today. The copy of the survey that you requested.
Oh, for this?
Yes.
Okay. So, they can make a motion to reopen the matter of Alyssa McLean and Andrew Winter, fifty Wicketuck Drive, New York, to accept recent submissions.
Okay. Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopen.
Okay, we're going to accept the written submission of the survey and then close that.
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Okay. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Now the decision.
Now the decision.
Yep.
In the matter of Alyssa McLean and Andrew Winter, fifty Wicketuck Drive, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map number nine hundred fifteen dash two dash twenty-three. The applicant requests relief from Pyramid. The premises is approximately eight, eight thousand ninety-seven square feet in the R ten zoning district. We find this to be a type-two action under SECR. At the public hearing, John Huber, attorney and architect Christopher Disuno, presented the existing house currently is twenty-five seventy-eight cubic feet into the Pyramid Zone, and the owners are requesting an additional two thousand seventy-one cubic feet for increased living space. There was no objections. We found this to meet the five-part test. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code, three thirty dash eighty-four, Pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of four thousand six hundred fifteen point oh-eight cubic feet, sixteen sixty-one on the southeast side, and twenty-nine eighty-eight on the southwest side for proposed additions to the second floor of an existing two-story dwelling on a non-conforming lot as shown on the survey by Gary Benz, LS, last revised two eighteen twenty, and architectural drawings by Disuno Architecture dated four one twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa?
Aye.
Ms. Kern?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
How long do you want to go before me? Go ahead.
Adam Scott.
I got it.
Oh, you got it?
Or unless you'd like to go first.
All right, I'll go.
Okay.
In the termination of the matter of the application of one eighty-six Watermill Town LLC, applicant requests relief from Town Code section three thirty dash seventy-seven-D placement of accessory building structures and uses in residential districts for a proposed rear yard coverage of twenty-four point six percent where a maximum of twenty percent is permitted for the location of a proposed sunken and screened fifty-five-by-one-ten tennis court. At the public- oh, the subject premise is located at one eighty-six Watermill Town Road, Watermill Town of Southampton. Property is identified in the Suffolk County Tax Map as nine hundred dash eighty dash one dash six point one and is one hundred and one thousand eight hundred and nine square feet in a CR eighty zoning district. At the public hearing on this matter, John J. Bennett Esquire appeared in behalf of the applicant. He stated that an agricultural reserve property butts on the east of the property, on the rear yard property line where the tennis court is proposed at the request of the neighbor to the immediate north, Mr. Zaluski. Applicant agreed to relocate the proposed tennis court from a conforming thirty-foot side yard setback off the northern property line to fifty-five-yard setback. The location of the proposed tennis court conforms to all setback requirements. It is- this application meets the five-part test. For the reasons set forth, this board grants applicant relief from Town Code section three thirty seventy-seven-D placement of accessory building structures and uses in residential districts